Good evening, everyone. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have words of inspiration this evening from Pastor Teo of the United Church of Christ. Pastor?
Let's pray. Our most gracious and loving God, you have promised to be present among us whenever we come together in your name. Remain with us as we meet for the benefit and love of your people. Thank you for your many gifts and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. Oh, God, at this moment, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and for this city council member. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern in the middle of conflict and terrorist and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our community, a thirst of peace, justice, and righteousness, confidence in what is good, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and most of all, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today, and bless all the people who are here. Thus, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember August, would you please make the pledge?
(inaudible) (inaudible) the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have any report out of closed session this evening?
Uh...
I'm sorry, city attorney?
Yes. The council met in closed session on the items shown on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. On to presentations. We have two presentations this evening. Council, would you join us up front? Good evening, everyone. We're going to go out of order slightly from what is reflected on the agenda, and I would ask that Gloria Sanchez, please join us up front, and also Leslie Covey, would you please join us up front? She said no, but I'm calling her up anyway. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Sanchez is the Chair of the Senior Advisory Council for Riverside County, and Leslie Covey is the Executive Director of the K. Sinocero Center here in Menifee. And what better way and/or what better two people to present this proclamation to in honor of Older Americans Month, which is the month of May? And I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Menifee is a community that includes a large number of older Americans aged 60 and older, the older adults in the city of Menifee are among our most treasured resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by diversity, and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our community. And increasing numbers of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining strong and active for longer than ever before. And the older adults in the city of Menifee deserve recognitions for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of our city and our nation. And our city can provide that recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engage in community life, providing individual life services and support systems to maintain the dignity, independence, and self-determination of older Americans as they age, and combating against attitudes by honoring their past, present, and future contributions. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Menifee hereby proclaims the month of May 2014 to be Older Americans Month and urges every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for many of them. Passed and approved and adopted the 7th day of May 2014, signed by all of us. Congratulations, ladies, and for representing us up here. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Today is a day that we're not going to forget because next after us, we're going to celebrate someone's birthday, and that tells you that we are aging in place and we are all getting older, but we're all staying productive. So to my senior citizens who are out there, thank you for being here. Thank you for remaining active in the city of Menifee. We will make sure that we have programs and services for you.
On behalf of these 3,000-plus seniors that come through the K. Sinocero Senior Center every month, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for this proclamation. It means a lot to the seniors that they're recognized as still vibrant to their community, and this is really important to make sure that message gets out there. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much for coming up and participating. Now, there is no more fitting way to recognize during the month of May, which has now been designated as Older Americans Month in the city of Menifee, we have a super senior citizen with us tonight, and probably the only one that's a little bit more wise than Mr. Edgerton in the room tonight. I think... Notice how I said "wise"? I was pulling... So with that being said, what I'd like to ask is Bobby Epley, would you please join us up here and your family if you would like? Come on up. Right here in the middle? Come on up, folks. And I am going to pass the mic to our deputy mayor Wallace Edgerton and say a few words.
Boy, I... You know, Bobby, I'm so happy about the fact that this is the seniors month, and henceforth, in all of the council meetings, you will hear the mayor and all of my colleagues refer to me as a treasured resource. By the way, tell us, Bobby, how you feel right now?
Oh, like a million dollars! No, actually.
You still gardening?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
You don't go to the bars anymore or anything like that?
No.
Bobby is a friend of my wife Judy and her family, and I was... She came over to the house, and I was so impressed with her attitude. And I asked her, I said, "Well, how do you feel?" I was worried about her. They said she's 100 years old. That was a couple of weeks ago. I said, "Well, how do you feel?" She says, "Oh, I feel wonderful." And, you know, and some of us say, "Well, I never want to get that old." Well, Bobby, I hope I make it to 100 if I feel like you. You're wonderful here.
Mayor?
Thank you, thank you. Let me go ahead and read this proclamation, which is yours. This is your proclamation in your day here in the city of Menifee, and then while... I'd like you to say a couple of words if you have it in you. I'm sure I know. Well, "City of Menifee proclamation: Whereas Menifee resident Barbara Bobby Epley turned 100 years of age on April 6, 2014, and celebrated that milestone with her family and friends. And Barbara Epley was born in Los Angeles, California, and studied physical education in college, and gave birth to five daughters that included two sets of twins. And Barbara loves to garden, read novels, play Yahtzee, and watch TV, sports, and game shows. And Barbara loves and inspires her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and defines her lust for life by always being happy and often responds to the question of 'how do you feel' with like a million bucks, like you just did.'" Now therefore, the city council of the city of Menifee proclaims congratulations to you, Bobby, on the milestone celebration of your 100th birthday. Signed, the entire Menifee City Council. Congratulations. The floor is yours. All right, very good. Well, you know what? I can only imagine that the things that you've seen in your life, the automobile, men on the moon, two great depressions, you know, and everything in between, and you've been around to see every great achievement in the United States of America, and we are very, very honored that you're here with us tonight. Congratulations to you, Bobby. Well done. Okay, thank you, one and all. On to Agenda Item 6, Approval of Meeting Minutes from April 16. Are there any modifications to the minutes? Deputy Mayor?
Just point out, and I had this discussion with Kathy, our city clerk, earlier today that our... Actually, our last meeting workshop is not here. It was a four-hour meeting. I think the agenda was due like the next day, so we're not looking at the city clerk. We already put too much on her, but just pointing out it's not here. We'll be getting a synopsis of that later.
Oh, you'll be getting the full minutes to approve with your next agenda production.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there are no modifications, the hearing none, the minutes are approved. On to Agenda modification or approval. Madam Clerk, are there any modifications to our agenda tonight?
No, sir, I have none.
The agenda is approved. On to Public Comment. We'll take our first speaker, please.
Yes, sir. Michelle Buchholz. Please tell me I said that right.
Hi. I'm sorry, I've never been to one of these before, so I don't know the formality.
Speaking... Raise the mic. There you go.
There we go.
So we can hear. Thank you.
Okay. So, my name is Michelle Buckles. I have four little boys, so I probably should have written something, but I don't have very much time. My boys range from eight to six months. I had an incident last week that I called the police on. I was in Sun City at nine o'clock in the morning and witnessed a gentleman doing graffiti up and down the street, called the police twice. They never came. I watched him for over an hour, called to file a complaint. No one ever called me back. Wrote the mayor a letter, sent him an email, and within two days finally had the police call me back to do a report. I did do a lineup since then, so hopefully I got the right guy and hopefully he's been arrested. But after talking to the sheriff's office and the police officers, I was informed that we only have four police officers in Menifee. I'm hoping that's not correct, but that just... That's not enough for our city. When I asked him why nobody had come, they told me that the person that was supposed to come was called away and that he was the only person that was on duty. That just doesn't make any sense to me, for a city our size to have four police officers. So I'm kind of wondering if we're going to be getting more police officers, when that's going to be, and hopefully it's going to be soon, because I just... I don't feel safe in a city this size with four police officers.
We agree with you. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for sending me that email. As you stated, we forwarded that immediately on to Captain Judge, as well as the city manager, and they did an investigation internally within their ranks and resulted in the feedback back to you. And the reason why we only have four deputies on duty at any one shift is because Governor Brown in 2011 took away our motor vehicle licensing fee revenue from us, and we had to substantially slash our law enforcement budget. So if you and anybody else in the audience would like to help us and write Governor Brown a letter to restore our funding, we would love to put those officers back on the street.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we're going to take your feedback and see if we can't do a better job next time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember August?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Katie Meanyer.
Good evening. After the truth came out about the county line about the sledge records and the city about them being destroyed, I sent an email to all of you council members. I did not send one to Ms. Biggs. I did not know her correct email address, and I thought it was a council member topic. I got a response from Ms. Biggs. I don't know who authorized it at $175 an hour that one of you council members could not have responded to an email, and instead the attorney sent me one. I am holding the city responsible. I made a demand, not a request, for this city to request the records from the county. I think it's your responsibility to do so, and nobody here seems to think it's their responsibility. So I'm holding the city responsible for not requesting the records from the county. Then, Wally, I have to ask you. You were on... Sat on the LA Water Board for years, and I want to ask you why sledge was stopped from being dumped in the ocean. I don't really need to ask you. I know why. It was stopped because fish were dying. It was dying the life of the ocean. Now, we've had it dumped in our city. What do you think it's going to do to our soil if it was killing the fish? And I believe the press enterprise did a big article about the fish die-off at our lake, and nobody knows why that happened. Has anybody considered it could have been the runoff? We had rain? Runoff, running into the lake? That's a possibility. On to my next thing. I got an email from a lady. I get several of these emails. This lady says, "I've been doing some research, and I need your help. I need to pick your brain. My kids are sick, as are many. I have been doing research, and it appears to me that many of the kids' symptoms are mimicking poisoning caused by chlorinated solvents used to treat the soil. According to research I have done, the chlorinated solvents induce liver and kidney changes, some irreversible. In addition to depression of the central nervous system, kids are struggling with mass breathing issues in a certain school in this city. Kids' parents throughout the city are stating their kids had never been so sick, had so many sick days due to exhaustion and chronic headaches and nausea, not to mention rashes developing under kids' armpits. We have to get to the bottom of this. My pediatrician wants to run blood and liver toxicity tests. However, he wants me to find out what the soil has in it. The city of Menifee informed me their only responsibility with testing the soil before building the school was to make sure it was properly compacted. They referred me to the Riverside County Health Department, and I'm not getting anywhere with them. Not surprising." She says, "I am prepared to go to the EPA and all the papers if needed. I just need to make sure I am well-informed on all levels."
Katie, that's your time.
Thank you. Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, just clarification, Katie. I was on the LA County Sanitation District. As we would sit on WR COG, I was there with maybe... For the number of cities in Los Angeles County, maybe 80 other people, just as a member. I did chair with about five people. I did chair the Southern California Research Project, which does monitor the sanitation districts from the Mexican border up to Ventura. And when you refer to the fish, that was because certain chemical companies were dumping stuff, particularly heavy metals, which included arsenic, into the water, and it would go into the ocean. And it did. It affected the kelp. It affected the fish. And we brought lawsuits against those companies, and we won them, and we had them to cease and desist. But that would be separate, I think, from your primary concern, which is...
No, you have to clarify sledge. Do the research.
Which is sludge. And we did have a meeting here with the county, and maybe the mayor or maybe the city manager will remember more clearly, but I thought we got a very thorough background of what the county knew and what the county didn't know, at least as far as the information we could acquire, and got a good clean of bill. I demanded that the city call the LA Sanitation District. They wrote us. They gave us information. The county of Los Angeles never sent anything here that would have been dumped in the ground. However, yes, it would go to companies like Bandini, various fertilizer companies. And I wouldn't suggest, as I have done, that if you're fertilizing your lawn, you reach in there and you use your hands without gloves, because you can get a rash from what you buy from Home Depot, et cetera. It is toxic.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Next public speaker, please.
Ann Pica. Good evening, councilmembers. I thought there was no transparency, and it was difficult for the public to get documents from this city clerk when Darcy Coonsy and Sue Christensen were in office. But it is now clear to the public, for the last five years, this city clerk has set up roadblocks to all members of the public when it comes to releasing public records. And this latest stunt by the city clerk regarding the RFP for city attorney was the last straw that broke the camel's back. We, the public, are fed up with the lack of transparency at City Hall and are not going to sit back and take it anymore. This city manager condones this type of action by the city clerk, and this city council does nothing about this city manager's attitude and lack of transparency. And all the while, the mayor sprouts out of his mouth, claims that they are the most transparent city council elected to office. Well, I don't know what you call transparent when you have a city clerk who refuses to release public documents that the public is legally entitled to review. Having said that, this city council, city manager, and city clerk are hereby put on notice that we will move forward with a petition to place on the ballot that the city of Menifee city clerk will be an elected position, and she or he will be answerable to the people of Menifee only. This action will start after you pick a city attorney firm, and if we, the public, are not satisfied with who you choose to represent this city, then they too will be a petition to have an elected city attorney. If this city council... If the city manager or the city council are not going to do their job, then the people will do it for you. And that goes for all those ordinances and permits that you allow the finance director to impose on the poor people of Menifee. They too can be placed on the ballot for repeal by the people. I have done this before, and I can do it again if need be. So start doing your job, or you will be replaced with the people who are willing to listen to the people and truly represent the taxpayers and what is in the best interest of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Janet Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman. My name is Janet Anderson, and I live in the community of Quell Valley. Two weekends ago, on Saturday, April 26, Quell Valley had their annual cleanup. Because of the support by the city of Menifee and waste management and of the many volunteers who participated, it was significantly effective and a successful event. With the help of Alan Yun in the Menifee Community Service Department and the city council's help, we removed 36 tons of trash, 23 tons of green waste. As the president of the Quell Valley Community Group, I'd like to thank the city of Menifee on behalf of both our organizations and on behalf of the majority of the residents in Quell Valley who appreciate living in an environment that is free of trash, even if it is only, as we know, temporary. We appreciate all of the hard work that goes into coordinating and carrying out such an event, and so again, I'd like to thank you for your support and your role in carrying out this valuable contribution to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson? Next public speaker, please.
Bill Zimmerman.
Good evening, councils. Nice to hear positive things from Mrs. Anderson. I want to tell you about something else positive that's coming up, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. Arts Council Menifee is going to be hosting our fourth annual showcase exhibit. It's an event that takes place at the Countryside Marketplace from 11 to 4. We'll have three sound stages. You know, you know what we do. We just got through doing a Menifee's Got Talent with dancers and musicians. We're going to do it again on the 17th. You'll see lots of dancers, musicians, actors, comedians, jugglers, you name it. We're also going to have about 25 artist booths, so all of that takes place between... Excuse me, Chipotle and the Beer Hunter. So hopefully you guys can all come. There are flyers that look just like this that are going to be out in the lobby, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
John, I hope I do this when?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I am John Wan, the new director, executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee. I just came by to introduce myself and say hi and look forward to working in Menifee and serving the community.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
W-H-A-N-N.
Thank you. Welcome. Next speaker, please.
Those are all the people that have given me slips under Public Comments, Your Honor.
Okay, very well. On to councilmember updates and comments, and I'm going to take the lead on just one thing, and then I'll give it to the rest of the council. You know, for the last five and a half years, every time that the city would have their Fourth of July celebration with the Menifee Lakes Women's Club and the annual birthday party at Wheatfield Park, the city would have booths, and we would take input from the community on what they wanted to see in terms of amenities. And invariably, the top five would always be more restaurants, more parks, movie theater, bowling alley, those types of things. And tonight, on behalf of the entire council and the economic development team at the city, we can scratch two of those things off of that top-five list. Regent Properties Partners with Crecorian Premier Movie Theaters at the Menifee Town Center. A 12-screen luxury movie theater entertainment complex, complete with a 16-lane bowling alley and a sports bar and grill restaurant, is set to open in the summer of 2015. And this is a great amenity. Crecorian is an upscale movie theater. I believe Menifee's sighting makes only their seventh in the Southern California area. This complex is projected to open in the summer of 2015. It'll include 12 stadium-step luxury auditoriums, all outfitted with leather, fully reclining seats, an in-theater food and beverage service, and a state-of-the-art sound system. In addition to the movie screens, the complex will feature a 16-lane bowling alley, a restaurant-sports-bar complex with a 70-foot screen and luxury sofa seating for patrons, and a family entertainment center, complete with private rooms for birthdays and other special events. So congratulations to the economic development team of the city and to my colleagues on the council. the council for having effective business incentive ordinances to bring these types of amenities to the city and for having quality stakeholders in the community who are willing to bring these quality commercial enterprises to our town. And with that said, I'll punt it to my colleagues for any other updates. Mr. August.
Two updates, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I too want to give my thanks and appreciation to Jeff Wyman from the Economic Development Department, the staff, and Rob Johnson. I know from speaking to Jeff many times, he doesn't always get the credit that he deserves, but I know on this particular project, he's been sitting there, working on it a long time, and being very persistent. So congratulations to him and the staff, and also the people of Menifee. I think they'd be very happy with this. Also, I had an opportunity to attend the Better Together program two Saturdays ago over at the, at Webb Hall. We had three hundred and two people participate, and it was at the head of Lisa Sobek, Habitat for Humanity was there, many volunteers from various churches throughout Menifee and the surrounding communities. I had the opportunity to be out at the Quell Valley Pickup, visiting not all twenty-eight, but several homes in the city of Menifee, where donations from Mary and Ashley helped people with cleanup materials and et cetera, paint, and all those types of things for some of the people in the quarry area and Sun City. So once again, my hat's off to Lisa Sobek, the Church's Habitat for Humanity, Don Prather, you were there too, I saw you. And what a wonderful effort by everyone in the city and everybody from the council. I saw everybody from the council in attendance that day, and Rob Johnson, and many people from the staff here too. So it was better than last year, and next year, we look forward to making it more and more in the seniors, really, and where we were, where I was, really, really appreciated from the city. So a great thanks to everyone who participated.
Thank you, Mr. August. Are there any additional comments from council? I would like to, Councilmember Furman.
I'd like to comment also on the Quell Valley cleanup. I actually started Friday night before making neighborhood pickups with my familiar sixteen-foot trailer, and I got the first load over there at nine o'clock, went back around the neighborhood and got another load, but I actually didn't get out of there till after one o'clock. It was so, just so busy. There was still, at twelve-thirty or quarter to one, there was still like ten cars in line. And actually leaving and driving home, I actually seen places that we missed. So there is a, there is a big need to everybody participating to clean up and talk to your neighbors, and let's clean the city up.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to draw by the event that they're referring to when many of the workers came in. And Rob Johnson, the staff were great. And of course, as Councilman Locke has pointed out, Lisa Sobek has always been a star in putting together not just members of the Latter Day Saints, but broader view of the community and getting things cleaned up. But the lady who came to the mic mentioned Alan Young. And I used to refer to Rob Johnson as the director of everything when he was new here at City Hall, because it seemed like anything and everything that had to be done, there was Rob Johnson. And I don't know what to call Alan Young, but maybe perhaps call him Mr. Everywhere, because the guy is at every single event, along with staff, but he's always there. Julie Woodruff is on medical leave, she isn't here tonight. But I've seen the guy early in the morning, usually not early in the morning, because I'm not up early in the morning, but when I get there at noon, he's there, and when I'm there late in the evening, he's there. When I'm there on the weekends, he's there. He is everywhere. And I'll remind you that Alan Young and people like him on staff are paid by a salary. They're not paid by the hour. And I just like to salute him and all his staff. I think they do a fabulous job, and so thank them.
That is a perfect lead-in to what I wanted to share. I know City Manager Johnson announced two weeks ago that the city had received another award for the general plan that was passed back in December of 2013. And the city received an award for that general plan from the Inland Empire section of the American Planning Association. And what I want to share with all of you is that that makes four awards that your city has received in the last six months. And Mr. Johnson, you've assembled an award-winning team, dare I say. When you look at the fact that the Government Finance Officers Association gave the city an award for their financial reporting and their comprehensive fiscal report, the city received a statewide award for the Menifee Matters Magazine. The city received a regional award for its creativity in the business incentive ordinance. And then, most recently, Mr. Leclerc's team put together an award-winning general plan for us to consider and approve. And so I just want to compliment the staff as well. Well done to each and every one of you. Congrats to all. Keep up the good work. So we're on to the next agenda item, and what we're going to do, because Agenda Item 11.1...
Consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Furman. On to the consent calendar. Do we have any speakers on the consent calendar? Madam Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. I entertain a motion on the consent calendar. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Agenda Item 11.1 cannot occur until after 7:00 PM, so I am going to, we're going to hear Agenda Item 11.1 first. Public hearing, community development block grant...
11.2.
I'm sorry.
Also published for...
11.1, 11.2.
Madam Clerk?
Both public hearings are published for 7:00 PM start time.
Very well.
So we would move to Item 12.1.
All right, very good. My apologies to you and the audience, I thought I'd just dealt with 11.1. So we are on Agenda Item 12.1. Consider adoption of policy with regard to operation and maintenance of city-owned parks and rights of way on the west side of I-215. Do we have any public commenters?
Yes, sir.
Call the first public commenter on Agenda Item 12.1.
Yes, sir. Frank Gorman.
Good evening. I am a director with the Valleywide Parks and Rec District, and I just want to thank you for considering us to be your partners with running the Parks and Rec District on the west side, as well as being our partners with running the Parks and Rec District on the east side. And we look forward to anything we can do in the future to help the citizens of Menifee and with working with your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Other speakers? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Michael Mudd.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff, thank you for hearing me. The topic that I have this evening is called "Fleecing the Coffers of the General Fund in Order to Empire Build." The city has a fiduciary responsibility in representing the incorporation, otherwise known as the citizens of Menifee, also known as the local government. We have elected councils to represent the interests of the people. We do not elect councils in order to represent its own interest. We do not elect council members or hire staff, i.e. city managers, to empire-build. The problem: county-wide versus valley-wide. The city will not be able to provide these services without dipping into the coffers of the city's general fund. In this case, outsourcing makes the most sense. Why? Valleywide can and will provide maintenance and park services better and for less than the city will be able to. The fictitious numbers that have been provided by the city manager, Rob Johnson, and the city's director of community services, Robert Lennox, would have us believe that all of the extra overheads, such as man-hours, unfunded liabilities, pensions, additional insurance, purchasing new equipment, trucks, hauling trailers, et cetera, would somehow be less expensive than subbing this work out to a company that has proven itself over and over through the years in many of the cities throughout the Riverside area. Valleywide has already stated that it will work with the current program, park programs, so as not to disrupt what is now working for our community. If having the city run these programs and services is a good idea, why hasn't the city provided the citizens with an actual itemized cost to take on these additional services? If it's the best policy to provide these services by the city, where are the numbers, Rob Johnson, that you say will be the better program? Rob, Scott, John, Robert? It's time to put up the numbers so everybody can see them, okay? That's what we want. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Howard Tungit. Howard Tungit.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The gentleman just asked for numbers and details. This is Valleywide's proposal. I made a few mistakes last time I was here, I probably gave you too much information. I am not involved in any lawsuit. I'm a concerned citizen from the Hemet area. Do pay attention to what Valleywide does. I go to their meetings at five o'clock on Mondays. And I do have documents to back up everything I'm going to tell you here today. I get the same services, the same programs that, that I get it for $22 a year. Your citizens pay, some of them, $560 a year for that same service. I only pay 22. There's no contract, according, how do you know? How can, how can you get into a deal with an agency that, when there is no contract, no details, no numbers, as the other gentleman just mentioned? What about extra costs for repairs and sprinklers and stuff that need to be done? Adami, their landscaper, currently does 30, $30,000 to $70,000 a month in extras. Valleywide doesn't have, this is a public records request, under blue, Valleywide doesn't keep the prevailing wage. There is no documents on file at Valleywide for prevailing wage on this, and this contractor for Valleywide gets $250,000 a month. It's not a year, a month. And he has no prevailing wage. Valleywide's bid is for $247 on maintenance, but they don't do it internally. One of you asked about when the last time they went out to bid. These are the signature pages where they just rolled over this Adami and French Valleys contract, going all the way back to 2002. Public contract code 20815.1 requires that any maintenance go out to bid over $25,000. Since Valleywide does not do this themselves, they have to contract out for this, I'm just curious to how they come up with that $247,000 price without going out to bid. How do you know that you're getting the lowest price with Valleywide here today? And again, I only pay $22 for the service that you pay $564.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Debbie Mannion.
My name's Debbie Mannion. I am president of Lake Menifee Women's Club, who works with the city for the Independence Day. And I would like to ask the council to support Valleywide in their endeavor to work with the city, because Valleywide has started with the city before we were a city. They, I've been here since 91. My parents have been here since 89. Valleywide has done nothing but help the city grow with the sports programs, the buildings, the Independence Day. We wouldn't even have Independence Day the way it is today if Valleywide hadn't started with the women's club, working on it. Valleywide has grown, the same as the city has grown, and I would like to see them continue to grow with the city, and I would like to have your support in Valleywide, for Valleywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mannion. Next speaker, please.
Ann Pika.
I'm requesting that the city council vote to extend a contract with Valleywide Recreation and Park District for the maintenance and operation of city-owned parks and right-ofways on the west side of Interstate 215. The contract with Valleywide will be over $76,000 cheaper than for the city of Menifee's projected cost of maintenance and employment of said parks and recreation centers. Not only is Valleywide going to maintain all the programs that are now in place, but are willing to expand on these programs at no extra cost to the taxpayers of Menifee. This is wonderful news for the parents who have children enrolled in these programs and to now know the west side will have the same, if not enhanced, programs without any increase in program cost to parents. Unlike the city community directors' plan to increase the cost of programs if the city takes over the control and maintenance of these parks and recreation centers, be advised, the city will not lose local control of these parks and recreation centers if the city council approves a contract with Valleywide to handle the west side of Interstate 215. The city did not lose local control when they had a contract with Riverside County for the parks and recreation centers on the west side of 215. County had a five-year contract, total was $510,010. I don't understand why the city manager has approved an RFP for proposals from qualified firms to provide landscaping maintenance services for the parks in the city of Menifee, or why he has set up a pre-proposal conference with landscaping vendors for Friday, May 12, 2014, when the city council has not made any decisions on the park and recreation centers on the west side of 215. It is my understanding, and per the Agenda, Item 12.1, that is what the city council will discuss tonight. Perhaps the portion of the Agenda of council member updates and comments, someone on the council will supply the public with an answer on the RFP, and the pre-proposal conference on landscape maintenance services that have been scheduled prior to the city council making any decision. Now is not the time to turn this over to the city of Menifee, as they are ill-prepared to hire new personnel and take on the parks this time. The taxpayers of Menifee would be well-served if money taken from the general fund was used to put more police on the streets, seeing that violent crime in Menifee was up 200% in 2013, per the sheriff's reports released to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Mr. Johnson, you had your light on. I know that you addressed the issue of the RFP on April 16, or you had a method to your madness. Would you answer that question, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, staff asked if council wanted to continue in that RFP process to get pricing. We were asked to continue through the process. It makes no difference to us to go continue with the RFP to get that pricing. If council has a policy direction to use Valleywide, then we have proposals with RFPs with pricing that we can match against what Valleywide's proposing. I believe that was the sense of the council, and that's why we did it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker, please, for 12.1.
Yes, sir. Al Wolfarth.
Thank you. I'm on behalf of Valleywide that you keep their services. Valleywide does one thing, it's park and rec. You all do everything else. You, but just recently, I think the mayor went up Sacramento and asked for more money for police and fire. Is this just, if you get Valleywide out, you're going to collect those funds and spread out throughout the city instead of going to the parks? You...
No, those are restricted funds.
Okay, just my three minutes. But, I lost my train of thought.
That's okay. I apologize. Please continue.
Yeah, thank you. You, Valleywide, like I said, does one thing, and they do, they've been doing it for decades. And if they had a shoestring budget, I would say that that shoestring is holding up a basketball net somewhere. You continue their service, and you can't go wrong. I sat here through a couple of city council meetings, and that so-called workshop, there's really a, really a city council meeting with one subject. And I listened to the mayor, Terragate, the director of Valleywide, and I came to two conclusions. Even if Valleywide got to vote, the word... Even if Valleywide got to vote, the working relationship with the mayor, as long as he's sitting here, would not work. And during that period of time, the mayor says, well, he's known Dean for years. They're friends. I think that's where that saying came from. Friends like you, they don't need enemies.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
Those are all the speakers under item 12.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you restate the action before us?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, consider adoption of policy. That's not an adoption of a policy, it's a policy direction with regard to operation and maintenance of city-owned parks and rights of way on west side of I-215.
And council member Edgerton.
I think most of us, and I'll speak for myself, came into this situation with a bias that we wanted our city to take over everything, the west, the east, and run our parks and recreation. A lot of cities do that. We thought it was a good idea. I thought it was a good idea. I still think it's a good idea. I thought that Rob Johnson had the ability and the background. He's got a parks background. He's got a good staff. I thought that they would do a good job running that program. I still think they would do a good job running that program. However, as we begin to do a lot of investigating and digging, I found nothing to take away from Rob, and nothing to take away from his staff, and nothing to take away from the ability of the city to do a good job. What I did find is some of the comments the last gentleman said was that Valleywide was intact. They were doing really a marvelous job. I got a lot of feedback from the community in support of Valleywide. And then we tried to do research, as has been pointed out. Our last council meeting was really one topic. It was called a workshop, but it was a council meeting, and it went for four hours. And we've chewed on this thing, and nobody, I think, is going to change their mind at this point. But I came to the conclusion, as one council member, that it is in the best interest of the community to allow Valleywide, for some period of time, I would suggest in my motion, say, three years. I'm sure they would want longer than that. Someone would want shorter, to take over the west side and have the city manager develop a contract with them, bring it back to the council, and that should be done immediately, because we have a number of programs that are in place. And we have staff. We have people out there in leadership positions, including kids and parents, who want some answers. And so this should be done as quickly as possible if this motion is to pass. How long should we stay with Valleywide? Maybe we'll find out in a year to two years if we don't like them. And maybe we'll end up keeping them for 10 to 15 years. Who knows? I think it's a matter of getting the job done for the community. It's not a matter of good guy, bad guy. They both are capable of doing it. But Valleywide is up and running now, and I think that's the safest way to go. And so my motion will be to have the city manager drop a contract with Valleywide, a three-year contract regarding the west side. And that would include taking over Lazy Creek. That would include taking over Casey's Narrow Center, and not having any kind of a blended contract, because I think that'll just mix it up and confuse it. We'll just have one group handling it, because that helps you in reference to accountability, whether you want to blame somebody, or you want to give somebody credit. Give them the whole ball, and let's see what they do. That is my motion. Madam clerk, if you want me to reword it, just have the council direct the city manager to give a contract to Valleywide to run the west side, including all of the facilities. And may I have a second for that motion?
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
First of all, I want to make some comments before we get an opportunity to second Mr. Edgerton's motion. And I'm going to read a prepared statement here. First, I would like to thank the staff, foremost, Robert Lennox, Alan Union, Margarita Caniego. I know how much time and effort you put into the preparation of the proposal of the city's taking over the west side, the operations, administration, and parks and recreation and facilities, along with the community services program throughout the city and at Casey's Narrows and Lazy Creek. Mr. Lennox, no one's doubting your expertise and experience in community services field, or that you could not institute a high-quality, very efficient, and very successful program for the city of Menifee. And nobody tonight is going to suggest, at least not me, that you won't be able to do that in the future. Having said that, we have to decide tonight on whether to approve letting the city or Valleywide administer and operate community services for the west side. If the city takes over, several new positions will need to be created within the city with full pay and benefits, creating additional need for space. And all this, before the city council, is determine a community services view and approach for the entire city, not just one side. My opinion is that until the city is ready to make that decision, it would be better to allow and approve Valleywide Recreation and Parks under the contract partnership relationship to operate, administer, and maintain all community services, facilities, parks, and programs for the west side for a period of time, for a period of time agreed on by the city council tonight. I would like to apologize to Rob Johnson and his staff and the community for what seems to be a last-minute turnaround on the part of the council. I believe rightly, and the staff was acting at the direction of the council. I do believe the council was surprised by the speed at which the staff put a plan in place and was ready to implement it. However, it's probably better not to commit the city to an on start, the on start of a full-fledged City One program until more research investigation takes place. I believe there's a consensus that the community service program and department is not a revenue generator, but more generally, a service requiring an end-of-year budget adjustment or fix, not in all cases, but definitely deserving strong consideration. I believe we, the city, are currently operating in financial balance, but in need always of more revenue. We are never sure what the state will confer on us next, or what turn the local economy may take. Anybody who says they know that doesn't know. For the time being, it's my opinion the city should contract out the west side. And I want to give you a reason that I think... Recently, last weekend, I think we all heard that Toyota's headquarters decided to move out of the state of California and moved to the state of Texas, taking with them 4,000 employees. And I want to read a quote to you from the mayor of Torrance, Mr. Stato, I believe his name was. And here's the quote. When you look at the whole package, "It's difficult to be a business here," lamented Torrance Mayor Frank Scotto, "whose community, on the edge of the Pacific, will suffer as jobs migrate to Texas. If all these great, high-end jobs are leaving California, then we're going to turn into a place that's a retirement community with low-paying service sector jobs," Scotto said. "We can't have that," he added, warning that unless the state has a change of attitude, it's going to be way too late. And when I make my decision for Valleywide, for a temporary takeover of the west side, I think the verdict's still out on the state of California as to whether or not we're going to be able to keep high incomes in the state, as well as jobs for the people. So my feeling, as far... Part of my feeling regarding Valleywide's takeover is to stay a little bit lean and a little bit clean, and provide a little adaptability for the city should the economic conditions change, or the state of California confers once again on us perhaps the takeaway of VLF fees or any other fees. So I would tend, if it's the right time, Mayor, I would second the mayor's motion, unless you want to hear more testimony.
Oh, of course. Mr. Denver?
I'd like to make a substitute motion, if I could.
Substitute motion?
My substitute motion is that we allow Valleywide to take over the parks on the west side. However, the city keep control of the two buildings, Casey's Narrows Center and the...
Lazy Creek.
Lazy Creek Center, please, if I could get a second.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second on the substitute motion to blend the services wherein the city would, if I understand your motion correctly, to hire and run the Casey's Narrows Center and the Lazy Creek Center, and then contract with Valleywide for operation and maintenance of the parks and programs.
I understand that to be the motion.
Call the question, please.
On the substitute motion, council member Furman. Council member Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
No.
Council member August. And Mayor Mann.
Aye. That motion fails for the lack of a majority. On to the original motion to award a contract to Valleywide Recreation and Park District for a fixed period of time on the west side of town. Call the roll.
Council member Denver.
That's for three years.
For three years, aye. Okay, very well.
Council member August.
Could you reread the...
Yeah, reread the motion.
I'm sorry. The motion, as originally made by Deputy Mayor Edgerton and seconded by council member August, was to ask the city manager to drop a three-year contract to return to council with the Valleywide organization for taking maintenance and operation of the parks on the west side.
Okay, before we vote, I need to clarify. Mr. Johnson, you had your button pushed, and you have something to add to this discussion?
Just a clarification, and I appreciate you letting me jump in here. The proposal that we have for Valleywide already has fixed numbers to them. Did you really need that contract to come back to council? I'm just thinking of timing issues. I can work with Dean to make sure that we have a good transition.
Well, cut to the chase. No. If you don't need it, we don't.
All we have, we have the contract numbers here. We can draw the contract up. Based on those prices, we can work out the other issues, if that's amenable. Otherwise, we've got to try to draft a contract and bring it back in two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. Thank you.
May I then restate the motion?
Yes, please.
As it seems to me now appropriate, to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Valleywide for services on the parks on the west side for maintenance and operation that were provided on April 30th in their proposal. For three years. Is that what you all understand? Mr. Edgerton, your motion. And Mr. August, your second.
Yes, and that obviously includes all of the facilities that are attached and associated with the west side.
I got it.
Regarding parks and recreation.
I have it. Okay, then let's try that vote with that corrected information, please. Council member Denver.
Aye.
Council member August.
Aye.
Council member Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
No.
I have the vote recorded. It is passed.
Very well. On to agenda item 11.1. We have a public hearing this evening, first of two, appeal of the Planning Commission decision on planning interpretation on the Falco matter. And at this juncture, Mr. Johnson, do you have a staff report?
Staff does. I will hand it over to Charles Leclerc, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. I'd like to apologize upfront. Because of the nature of the meeting, I will have notes that I'll be reading from.
Mayor Mann, just to clarify and set the stage here, this is an appeal from the Planning... Excuse me. From the Planning Commission determination, but it is also part of a code enforcement action that is ongoing. As a result, we have set this up for a court recorder to handle and create a transcript. And in order to do that, I believe she needs to swear in everybody who's going to be talking this evening, and then proceed in that matter.
Procedurally, if I might ask a question of you, we didn't do that last time we had a public hearing where we had a court recorder. None of us were sworn in.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't. Nobody raised their hand and swore to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Is that what your...
Oh, that's right. Excuse me. We didn't, because that was merely a procedural determination. In other words, the council at that point had been challenged by the parties for bias, and therefore, there was no testimony or substantive discussion of the matter. It was only the discussion of the way to proceed. And that had to do not with this matter, but with another matter that we have... Excuse me. Had the same arrangement on. But for this matter, as we did at the Planning Commission, we will be swearing in everybody.
Excuse me, city attorney. Ladies and gentlemen, as you go in and out of the council chamber, we're trying to conduct business here. If you would please contain your discussion to the foyer and keep it down, please. Thank you very kindly. Please proceed.
At any rate, procedurally, we'd like to do that. And we'll do that just across the board, have everyone in one motion.
All right. Let's proceed.
You want to go ahead?
Charles Leclerc. Do solemnly state...
Do solemnly state.
That the testimony I shall give...
That the testimony I shall give...
Shall be the truth.
Already sworn in.
The whole truth. And nothing but the truth.
Mr. Leclerc, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I would like to begin my presentation tonight with noting what this hearing is not about. It is not about Mr. Falco's individual business on Leeann Lane. It is not about the activity being conducted at that location. It is not a code violation, public nuisance hearing. It is not whether or not Mr. Falco possesses, stores, processes, or uses asbestos on that property. It is also not about resolving the known neighbor dispute between Mr. Falco and his neighbors, the Garcias. What tonight's hearing is about is whether staff, and then the Planning Commission, understood and properly used the provisions of Ordinance Number 348, Section 13.1d, correctly in interpreting the code in finding that a commercial plumbing business is not, per code, substantially the same in character and intensity to other permitted uses within the Light A1 Agricultural Zoning District. Please note that the city attorney's... Excuse me. That the staff's attorney, Mr. Stephen McEwen, will address the council following my remarks. By way of background, the council is aware that Mr. Falco is conducting a commercial plumbing business, Accurate Leak Locators, at 29135 Leeann Lane, within the Light Agricultural Zoning District. Following contact by the Code Enforcement Division, Mr. Falco applied for a code interpretation under Ordinance 348, requesting that I, as the Community Development Director, find that based upon the information he provided, that the commercial plumbing use could be determined to be a use allowed within the Light Agricultural Zone. My interpretation of the code was that a commercial plumbing business was not substantially the same as other land uses in the agricultural zone, and provided that determination to Mr. Falco in a letter dated February 20, 2014. That determination was appealed to the city's Planning Commission, and on March 24, 2014, the commission conducted a de novo hearing on the issue to make its interpretation of the code. At that hearing, in consideration of the staff report prepared, and following presentations from myself and representatives from Mr. Falco, as well as comments from the public, the commission voted three to two to adopt Commission Resolution Number 2014-173, which found that a commercial plumbing business is not substantially the same in character and intensity to other permitted uses within the district, and therefore, is not allowed use in that district. The commission's decision... The commission's decision was subsequently appealed, and that is the request before the council tonight to conduct another de novo public hearing on whether the council can interpret the municipal code to allow a commercial plumbing business upon any agriculturally zoned property. Again, tonight's hearing is not a citation hearing, and any interpretation of allowed land uses would be applicable to all properties zoned light agricultural. Regarding the code interpretation, please consider the following. Within the general plan, under Exhibit LU-3, land use designations, the chart identifies agriculture as an anticipated use within the community, but establishes that anticipated uses as agricultural land, including row crops, roves, nurseries, dairies, poultry farms, processing plants, and other related land uses. Residential uses are also identified. From an examination of the general plan and development code, it appears that the primary focus of the light agricultural zone was and is for the low-intensity, single-family, or farm agricultural oriented uses, not clearly independent, non-agricultural, non-residential, commercial activities. Uses that are not specifically agricultural in nature, such as schools, churches, grange halls, sales stands, et cetera, are uses that can be seen as clearly traditionally associated with and supportive of agricultural land uses. I note the general plan has goals and policies that address agricultural uses. In summary, there are four that are of note. They are in your staff report. Uh, one focuses upon the city helping and preserving the rural areas. Another notes it's, it's a goal of the general plan to preserve, protect, and enhance existing rural estate and residential neighborhoods. A third is to preserve the rural character of rural estate and small estate residential uses. And fourth, to support the development and preservation of unique communities and rural neighborhoods in which each community exhibits a special sense of place and quality of design. Currently, the light agricultural A1 zone allows a variety of land uses, principally focused upon low-density residential, farm, animal raising, and/or agricultural uses. The material reviewed by the Planning Commission on March 24th cites several examples of uses listed within the light agricultural zone that Mr. Falco believes support the identified commercial plumbing activity as substantially the same in character and intensity to other allowed land uses. Uses that were discussed in the staff report presented to the commission, which included material from Mr. Falco, were uses such as nurseries and greenhouses, keeping or raising crowing fowl, fraternal halls, churches, temples, and private schools, as well as very specific commercial activities, such as real estate offices, wineries, agricultural stands, and feed and grain sales, were addressed within the commission's report, but staff found that each of these uses were either consistent with the uses expected within an agricultural zone by their nature, large expanses of land, water usage, tending of the crops and harvesting, by tradition for the need to be close to residential activities, churches, synagogues, and so forth, associated with residential development, or by their low intensity, such as the fruit stands and so forth. Finally, while it is correct that the city made an allowance for a specific type of commercial activity when it made its recent determination that a silk screening business was acceptable within the light agricultural zone, the commission considered this, and based upon its decision, found that that decision did not form the basis to support establishing a commercial plumbing business as an independent activity or acceptable use within the light agricultural zone. As a technical matter, your interpretation of this code, whether it's approval or denial, would be considered exempt under SEQA. As was stated within the staff report to the Planning Commission, it is staff's opinion, as supported by the decision of the commission, a commercial plumbing business as the sole or principal use of a property is not, and this is a quote from the code, "substantially the same in character and intensity," end quote, "to the uses permitted within the light agricultural zone." That's a very important issue. That is the crux of which you are considering. That code section says that staff and then the Planning Commission, now the city council, may make a determination, an interpretation of the code, to allow a use if it can be found to be the same in character and intensity. If it cannot be found to be the same in intensity and character, then that code interpretation to allow that use cannot be permitted. The obvious alternative to that is that if the council makes that determination that it is not similar, that it is not the same in character and intensity, obviously, the, Mr. Falco in this case, or any other individual, can apply for a code amendment to establish that particular use as a permitted, conditionally permitted, use within that zone or any other zone that they would choose to apply for. So there is a mechanism available to the property owner, or any property owner, to seek a, a land use allowance by going through code amendment process. Allowing this land use, however, may set a precedent that would open the door to many other sole, solely commercial activities within the light agricultural zoning district. The council obviously has at least three alternatives available to it. The council may find that the appellant has provided sufficient substantial evidence for record to overturn the commission's code interpretation and establish commercial plumbing activities as a permitted or conditionally permitted use within the light agricultural zoning district. The council may also determine that additional information is needed to make a decision on the issue and continue the item to a date certain directing staff to return with additional information. The third alternative is find that based upon the information provided, the commission did not err in its interpretation of the code, uphold the commission's determination that a commercial plumbing activity is not substantially the same in character and intensity as uses listed within the light agricultural zone, and therefore deny the appeal. We'd like to point out that you have been, have been provided with a copy of the staff report that was presented to the Planning Commission at your mark, at its March 24th hearing, in which the staff went into very great detail to address the specific issues that had been raised by Mr. Falco and his representatives. The staff report that was presented to you for tonight's meeting focused more upon the very issue itself of the land use similarity. Staff recommends to you that the council adopt Resolution Number 2014-365, upholding the commission's interpretation that sufficient evidence was not presented for council to determine that a commercial plumbing business was substantially the same in character and intensity as those uses allowed within the light agricultural zone, and thus, a commercial plumbing business is not a permitted or conditionally permitted use within the A1 zone. We'd also like to point out that the, that the council should know that staff is working on modifications to the development code to address activities not addressed under the relatively recently adopted provisional business license ordinance. That material may form the basis for addressing Mr. Falco's violations if the council opposes the commission's interpretations of the code and directs staff to work with Mr. Falco to correct his code violations. Now I would, now I would request that the city council receive comments from Mr. Stephen McEwen, following which staff will attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor Mann, members of the council, good evening. I'm Stephen McEwen. I've been retained as special counsel to advise staff in this proceeding. And the reason that occurred is there was a, a case that came out last year which said that attorneys from the same firm can't advise the hearing body, and then also advise staff. So I'm here in a, in a special counsel capacity. The dilemma that we have here is that the, the land use that is presented to you tonight is not currently allowed in the A1 zone. And the challenge, as it is in all code enforcement cases, is to try and find a solution to that violation. What staff wants to do is to separate this zoning interpretation, which will apply throughout the city and in, and in the future, from the narrow question of how to resolve the code violation on the property. And we think it's very important to keep those two issues separate. Right now, the nuisance abatement proceeding, the nuisance abatement action, has been on hold while this administrative appeal is pending. Uh, we obviously thought it was important that the Planning Commission and now the city council weigh in on this issue. So that code enforcement action has been on hold. When this is over, city staff will continue to work on resolving the code violation. And that can be done with your direction. And it can be as aggressive or non-aggressive as you want. And, and Mr. Leclerc had mentioned one possible solution. You know, I've dealt with these types of issues before, and really, the, the range of solutions is, is pretty broad, and it really is a matter of being creative sometimes in solving some of these land use issues. They can be complicated, and they can involve a lot of emotion with neighbors involved, and they can be tough to resolve, but the key thing is that you have the ability to provide direction, and, and staff can come up with creative solutions. And I know that at this point, Accurate Leak Locators is still operating on the property, and staff is, is still trying to come up with, and they're still interested in reaching a solution to those existing code violations. So while staff wants to see a solution to this problem, they want to avoid a solution that will affect the entire zoning code, in particular, the A1 zone, and that would apply into the future. So staff's position is not to use this proceeding to solve a code enforcement issue. We request that the council reserve that code enforcement resolution for another day and uphold the director's code interpretation and the Planning Commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKean. Mr. Leclerc, anything else from staff at this point?
Not at this point.
Council, are there any questions of staff at this juncture? Mr. Edgerton?
Um, yes, the, what is before us, as I understand it, is to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, sir. Well, no, this is a de novo hearing. You examine the evidence that is presented to you, the requirements of the code, such as the code provision that says that you can establish a, a previously unlisted use as a permitted or conditionally permitted use if you can make this finding. The finding being that it is the same in character and intensity to other listed uses. This is independent of the Planning Commission and the staff's determination.
Oh, I see. Well, because somewhere in your report, you state that if we're going to find the Planning Commission in error.
Correct. That's simply a way to phrase it so that if they didn't do what they were supposed to do correctly, then you can make that.
The commission did not err.
Right.
Yeah. Just, just for further clarification before I ask the other question. It was my understanding that this was very difficult for the Planning Commission because in trying to differentiate what Mr. Falco was doing from a lot of other admissible kinds of activity, that it was really a matter of degree and not of kind. It came down to, um, not black and white, but a matter of grays, and where do you draw the line? It, it was my understanding that Mr. Phillips had a very difficult time with it. He's an eloquent man and writes very well, for those of you who, who've worked with him. But, but his first inclination was to allow Mr. Falco to proceed from the information I get back that happened at the Planning Commission. Uh, I haven't talked to Mr. August about that, but that it was the environmental factor that... Well, first of all, let me, let me ask, do you recall it that way? I, I, it was a three-two decision. It was a tough decision, and I think Mr. Phillips changed his position during the course of the hearing. Is that?
I don't recall that he had announced a position prior to the vote. And as far as how he looked at it, I'd be speculating. I, I see from the fact that it was a three-two vote that it was something that the Planning Commission as a whole took very seriously and, and, and struggled over. And there was quite a bit of discussion, but beyond that, I'd be speculating as to what their, their process, thinking process was.
Right. And as was pointed out by Mr. Leclerc earlier, the, um, the issue that he was concerned about, which some people tilted, had him tilt toward denial for Mr. Falco, was the environmental one, of bringing in the asbestos. Which, again, I, I agree with you. It's not part of the issue. That could be handled separately and completely. I just wanted to point out it was a very, very tough decision, so maybe it'll be a tough decision for us. But I did, um, maybe it's easier if we know, as you pointed out, Mr. Leclerc, that Mr. Falco has options and alternatives. And, and help me to understand this. You say, "There will be other opportunities to resolve ALL Plumbing municipal code violations in a manner consistent with the city council and direction. This method of resolution will be preferable because it will not affect either A1 zone as a whole or future land use decisions. In addition, ALL Plumbing, once its code violations are resolved, will have the opportunity to apply for a development code amendment requesting that commercial plumbing business be established as a permitted or conditionally permitted land use within the A1 zone." And so, to say that differently, am I to understand that if he pays for his violations, if he resolves that issue, he could then apply for this development code?
And? You have two ways of addressing this. Two different, two different issues. One, we must deal with the code violations that are alleged at this moment. We have a mechanism, as I mentioned, that, that we could come to an agreement with the property owner in order to, to come up with an agreement to how we're going to address that. That would then resolve the immediate code violation. Perhaps that agreement, depending on what is approved by the council, would allow him to continue for a specified period of time. After you've addressed that code violation in and of itself, whether it's an agreement, or if they stop activities for a specified period, or whatever it is, the gentleman could also apply for a code amendment, which would be considered by the Planning Commission and city council to establish a land use in the light agricultural zone, or change the zone, or something of that sort. Either one of those, which if it were approved, would then legitimize that kind of a business at that location, thus removing the need for the, if there was an agreement made, or the ceasing of the activity until that decision was made.
So this, this, this in effect is totally separate from what we're?
Yes.
What we're discussing tonight?
Absolutely. You are discussing a land use, whether a specific land use is permitted in the light agricultural zone, a specific zone, and whether or not you, as the council, can make a determination that that activity is the same in character and intensity as other listed uses.
And one assumes if, well, I don't want to assume, and I'm asking, is if he, if he applies for this development code amendment, that during that process of hearing, generally on appeal, somebody is entitled to continue their business during that period of time.
That would not be an appeal, though. This is an appeal. The, the, any decision of the council to act or give guidance to staff as to how it should act on addressing this issue would be separate from an appeal. You are correct that in a lot of cases where there's a, a land use activity that needs a conditional use permit, or needs to conform to some standards, or whatever, the city is tolerant of that activity while a, an application is being processed. But at this point, there is no application, there is no process in order to be initiated to go through.
Well, to, to cut to the chase, assuming that we, we, we proceed as staff recommends, then that he could... he could resolve this issue and then continue with the application for the development code amendment, in which case, he could conceivably be there permanently.
The council could direct staff to work with the property owner to come up with an agreement that would allow him to continue in some manner while that code amendment was being processed. And dependent upon the outcome of that decision, he could then either be required to complete whatever that agreement was, or cease the activity, or become legitimate if the business were determined to be an acceptable business in that zone, either by right of zone or through a conditional use permit.
And that's something that staff could recommend?
That, yes, staff could recommend that. That you work, that you direct staff to work with the property owner to achieve that.
Well, okay, this is, and then I'll get off of this. It kind of reminds me of the king who gets the complaint from the lady about her and her baby, and the husband won't pay sufficiently for her to take care of herself and her baby. So the king says, "Well, we're going to fix that blaggart, and we're going to fine him." And by fining the man, they take more money from him. So it really doesn't do anything for the complaining, for the person who's complaining. And it seems strange to me, because in this situation, while this is not technically relevant to our decision tonight, there is a neighbor who is complaining. So in effect, one would say, what we're going to do tonight is going to resolve his situation. But in effect, there is an out for Mr. Falco where it wouldn't be resolved, indeed, he would stay there permanently. So it almost looks to me like, Mr. Falco, we know, is an affluent man with a very successful business. He'll probably be able to pay for this, and he'll be able to pay for the alternative. It almost looks like it's more a money issue than a land use issue.
It's a land use in the fashion that if the council directs staff to work with them and allow him to continue until, and if he applies for a code amendment, and then that code amendment is reviewed by the Planning Commission and forwarded to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, and then the council approves that code amendment that would establish that use, then what you said is correct. However, those are discretionary, one's a recommendation to you, and the other is a discretionary decision on the part of the council. Simply because the individual applies doesn't guarantee that the request will be approved by the council. And it would be further evidenced by your decision tonight that there would be concern for that kind of a land use activity in this zone by your inability to find that it's substantially the same in character and intensity to other permitted uses. But it is at least an alternative available if the council directs staff to work with the property owner. I'm assuming that that direction to work with the property owner would also be a very clear direction to staff to attempt to resolve the neighbor dispute aspects of this whole issue, to make it as palatable to the neighbor as possible in regard to the conflict that currently exists between the two property owners.
Well, because the way it's worded, it seems like a sweetener if we go ahead and uphold the split decision, the Planning Commission, in which case, the neighbor will still be left unhappy. Mr. Falco will be left with less money. And like the king, we'll end up with the money, and there'll be no resolution to the problem. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
I guess the message that we want to get across tonight, and what we want to emphasize, is that there's a whole range of ways to solve the problem. One of them is the procedure that we're going through tonight. And they initiated that procedure, and it's allowed, they're allowed to do that under the code. Staff's position is that this procedure is not a good way to solve the code problem, that we would rather look at these other options, which would occur within the context of the code enforcement action, that we would focus on this property without having an impact on the A1 zone in general. And that's the concern that council, that staff has, and that's why we're asking that the council uphold the Planning Commission's determination and the Planning Director's interpretation. And when we say uphold, this is a de novo review, which means you take a fresh look at it. In other appeals, so if, in some instances in court, Court of Appeal is, has to give deference to the trial court's factual findings. They can't just go take another look at it. They come in and they say, "Okay, we're going to go in with the presumption that those findings are correct." But here, de novo review means it is an appeal, and you would be upholding the decision or reversing the decision. You're taking a fresh look at it, as you're entitled to do under the code. So again, it's really just a matter of, let's pick the best solution. And staff feels that the one that's been proposed, this code interpretation, while it might solve the problem for Accurate Leak Locators, it will have ramifications throughout the A1 zone and in the future. And that we think that this case, the code enforcement case is on hold, that staff had been discussing the matter with them. They hadn't been able to reach a resolution as of yet. That doesn't mean they can't do that. And of course, this is something, obviously, that City Council can weigh in and provide direction, as it often does on code enforcement matters. So we think that that is the best way to go about it, rather than to make this interpretation that will apply throughout the A1 zone and in the future.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Councilmember Furman.
It is my understanding that there's no manufacturing, there's no assembly, there's no performance of any plumbing service done on this location. All right. Now, I look at a business in a rural community. If I have a lawnmower shop, I'm having lawnmowers brought in and fixing lawnmowers. Now, there's no, if I'm correct, there's no plumbing services or work or assembly or manufacturing done on this property. So my question is, what kind of business is he running, other than parking his vehicles and assigning them jobs out through the city and back? Where is the business part of your analogy that is different from anyone else parking vehicles on their property, similar to farm equipment? There's, I have personal knowledge of other equipment that is set on their property that goes out on the job during the day and coming back. So I see similarities in what he's doing, and if it's my understanding is correct, he's only parking his vehicles there and sending them out to work. Now, am I correct in that analogy?
No. No, you are not correct in that analogy. This individual does not live, nor none of his employees live on this site. So it's an agricultural zone. The primary use is either agricultural or residential. The individual has a number of vehicles, by his own admission, up to nine vehicles that are stored and dispatched. So there's a dispatch office and records-keeping office being conducted at this location. There is storage of a variety of materials used in those plumbing activities. There are also individuals that come, leave their vehicles, and are given the company vehicles and go off on assignments being conducted there. Yes, it is true that there are vehicles that are associated with agricultural activities that come and leave the site. But those are traditionally associated with that kind of an activity, and staff assumes that in the creation of this agricultural zone, that those kind of activities and those kind of vehicles were accepted as such. This is a request not to examine Mr. Falco's individual business, but the business in general of commercial plumbing, which could involve, not necessarily with Mr. Falco, but if the use is established, then that use could involve such things as everything I talked about, plus plumbing activities being conducted on that site. Because it would be difficult for staff to distinguish if this use is allowed in that zone, that that particular aspect of plumbing businesses is not allowed, but these activities are. So you are correct in the fashion that certain activities do occur on this property. But again, staff's analysis of this is that the very nature and character of this commercial activity is not what is consistent with the uses that are listed in the light agricultural zone.
All right. Let me, let me give you just maybe one more analogy before I finish. If, if a person had, he did agricultural sprinkler systems and had five truckloads of pipe that he would put out in the agricultural fields and water the fields, and he would bring them in and out and set up agricultural fields on his trucks, would that be a use that would be permitted?
I would have to think about that for a while, because if you, if you are doing it as the primary activity on that site, and you are not using those, that irrigation equipment on your site, then it would be a commercial activity, and it would not be listed in, as a permitted use in that zone. If you happen to have friends that are willing to pay you for the fact that you have a large collection of irrigation equipment that is used on your site and occasionally used on their site, no, that would be incidental, and it would be allowed. The distinction would be the intent behind that activity. In this, in your example, the intent is to have a commercial activity, irrigation, that you rent out to whomever chooses to walk in and ask for, or call you up, or email, however it is that you're contacted, and that they go out there, provide that service, you pay them, and they come back, store that vehicle, store that equipment, keep records at that location, and dispatch from that location. And in addition, in the case of Mr. Falco, no one even resides at that residential property or agricultural property.
Is the residence the big problem, then?
No. But it is the, there are two primary uses for the light agricultural zone, residential and agricultural. The zone does say the primary use is residential.
Yeah. All right. I still feel that his activities are similar to other activities I see in the area.
Well, I understand your position, and Vice Mayor Edgerton is correct in that this is shades of gray, and it is up to an interpretation of the council.
And I saw in your report that you find some similarities also.
Yes.
Okay.
In the broad spectrum, yes, there are some similarities.
If we were to go against your recommendations, would we be changing at some point the zone A1 to include commercial plumbing into that zone?
You're not changing the zone. You're establishing a new use permitted in that zone.
What I meant to say was, is in that A1 zone, would there now be commercial plumbing inside that A1 zone?
Yes.
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 Okay. If the problem was, not what we're talking about, but if the problem was that, as sort of a grandfather issue, having to do with Mr. Falco, and the issue was not what you're talking about, could theoretically, we come up with a solution where, tied in with the agreement to go along with you and your proposal, and the way I'm going to put it is to not change the content of the A1 zone, could we put right in that same amendment, with that same sentence with a comma, to instruct the city to solve the problem in one form or another, even with detail, two years maximum, turn the lights off at nine, no trucks in, no more than so and so, whatever it is that we so decided to do? Could we, would, and if it turned out that our concern was Mr. Falco's problem, not necessarily the A1 zone, is what I just said a possible solution for us?
The City Council can direct staff to work with the property owner to enter into an agreement to resolve the neighbor issues and establish certain criteria that they could operate that activity for a specified period of time in order to either change the code or to give that individual property owner the opportunity to resolve the situation by changing the code through a code amendment, or moving from the property, or stopping that activity.
One of my concerns here is, is that there are a number, as has been said, there are a number of businesses in our community that are on, not in their proper zone. And part of, and when you talk to those people, many of them say, "Show me where to move to so I can stay in Menifee." With the exception of Commerce Point 1 and 2, which isn't built yet, I'm not quite sure where we send them to. And as a matter of fact, we can't send them anywhere, as far as I know, and keep them in the city of Menifee. Maybe the solution we should have, if we so choose, might be, and I suspect you would agree, along the lines that we were talking about, having in one motion a resolution for Mr. Falco only, if we wanted to, and enough time to be able to find a commercial location for him and potentially other non-conforming uses, so they have place to move to.
Well, as staff mentioned, I am working on a code amendment that would kind of bridge the gap between our provisional business license issue and the current problems that property owners have brought to the city's attention relative to their issue of nonconformity and so forth. So yes, you do have the opportunity to direct staff to resolve this one case by working with the property owner and then upholding the Planning Commission's determination. Or you can direct, you can, you're pretty free to do what you want to do. You can make that direction, you can not make that direction, you can make the direction and not take action on the appeal. There may be some problem with that, but you have the options available to you.
Councilmember Denver, if I may, by way of example, and I don't, hesitant to start getting into negotiation of particular terms in public without having direction from the council on what that might be, but I can give you an example of a case that I handled.
I agree. We haven't even taken public testimony out of the appellant or anybody else, so let's move this along.
Okay. I apologize. But by way of example, we had a property in another city, property owner bought the property for a specific purpose. As it turned out, it was impossible for them to do that at that property because it was in a flood zone. Very difficult code enforcement situation because they put a lot of money into the property. We gave them a period of time to either get the property legally permitted or to move out, and during that time, they were able to continue doing that business. But it did have a set time. So that is one possible solution. I just want to bring that to your attention, because I think that was what you were thinking about in your question.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember August.
Oh, for the staff, two quick questions. We're going to get an opportunity to listen to Mr. Falco, I believe.
Yeah.
We haven't opened up the public hearing, but I forgot to recognize you, Mr. Falco,
for being at the Better Together. From what I hear, you were an important part of making that day a success. But my question to Mr. Leclerc is, we're talking, you've represented a silk screening business here tonight, and I believe what you said is the Planning Commission denied the request for that business to operate in that zone?
No, sir, I did not.
What did you say?
I said that the commission's recent approval establishing silk screening as a permitted, as a conditionally permitted use in the A1 zone was examined by the Planning Commission, and that they did not find that that approval was sufficient support for the commission to make the determination that a solely commercial plumbing activity would be allowed in the same zone.
So the silk screening business is allowed to operate?
The silk screening business is allowed to apply for a conditional use permit so that the activity and the nature of the activity, the location, all the other details, but that the commission found that it was sufficiently different from this activity to make the distinction.
Okay. My second question, real quickly, in 2010, when Mr. Falco received his permit, what was the, what was the disposition of the planning, planning at that time? And if we're having such a problem with it now, how come we didn't have a problem with it in 2010, if that's the correct year?
At that time, business licenses were not reviewed by the Planning Division in order to make a land use determination, and they were issued a business license based upon what information had been available. We have the Finance Director that can answer that as well.
The city was not doing business licensing at that time. The county was performing business registration, and it's a very different process than business licensing.
So when Mr. Falco was approved, it was by the county? So, when Mr. Falco was approved, it was by the county?
The business licensing was performed by the county, correct.
Okay.
Did you ever get a license from Menifee? Okay, I have, uh, Mr. Edgerton, before you speak again, I'm going to have the city attorney speak, she had her button on.
Yes, I just wanted to point out to you that, uh, the procedure here should be that you hear from Mr. Falco before you open it to the public comment.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor.
Just want to, excuse me, Mr. Leclerc, I want to express a concern, and maybe you can help us, my concern. It says here on the future agenda request on our, um, agenda tonight, it says, "Future workshop for business licenses, home-based businesses, and code enforcement as interrelated." And we've been coming across a lot of complaints from a lot of businesses saying that, "Well, you have to get a business license, or you have to do this, and then if you do this, then you have to do that," and we hear some horror stories. Granted, this is anecdotal, so it's not evidentiary, but they're talking in terms of thousands and thousands of dollars, which literally forced some people to either move or to go out of business. And my concern, and maybe you can respond to it, my concern that, well, as you pointed out already, and I'll use your term, the decision by the planning commission was a shaky one, shaky being your term, and in that it is so difficult to get your arms around this as to, in the gray area where, uh, Mr. Falco fits. With that in mind, my concern of proceeding with this and taking staff's recommendation at this time is likely to inadvertently push our code enforcement officers out there on a kind of hunting license for a lot of small businesses throughout our city, and I know that's not what the council wants, and that does concern me, and to some degree, there has been a fear that that has already happened, and therefore my, you can see where my inclination is coming from right now.
I understand your comments, I hope I didn't use the word shaky, um, that the city is aware, and as I mentioned, staff is working on a program to bridge that gap between the provisional business license issue and the concerns that have been raised by twenty or thirty businesses within the community. Yes, there is a potential right now to, to, under current code, that it would cost thousands of dollars to address certain things, but staff is attempting to, uh, come to a more amicable resolution of the issues by creating this new code that you will have the opportunity, after the planning commission reviews it, that you will have the opportunity to review. Yes, there will still be some costs associated with it, but every business has costs that are associated with it. We are mindful of that and will minimize that to the extent the council will allow, but ultimately, that decision itself will be a council decision.
And could this new code potentially incorporate Mr. Falco's business?
Um, depending on, depending on the extent that the council gives, staff's current material would be for businesses that were in existence prior to city incorporation, but there is still an option in, when it goes through all of its steps, of having businesses that were established even after the city incorporated. If that provision is put into the code, then it may be applicable to Mr. Falco's property.
Thank you. Um, I just have, since I'm the last one and all the other questions have been answered or asked, I just, uh, city engineer, is there, uh, with this type of business that's operating over there right now, is there an issue of MS4 permitting, um, and exposure and risk to the city in terms of oily waste, stowing, handling, transporting, oily waste as well as the asbestos handling that's going on with that business?
Based on that information, I would have to say, yes, we would have to include them into our commercial industrial inspection program, which is part of the MS4.
Whether they're there or any other location in the city, that would have to occur, yes?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, council, are there any other questions of staff at this time before I open the public hearing?
We'll hold them for later.
All right, very well, at this time, I will open the public hearing at time 8:05, and Madam Clerk, did we receive any additional correspondence after being legally noticed?
There is one, uh, email in your packet that came in today from a representative of the appellant asking for information, otherwise, no.
And it was prop, the hearing was properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to call for public testimony at this time, and, uh, in accordance with, uh, the procedure here, the appellant gets to go first, Mr. Falco or Representative Mr. Falco, you have the podium. Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mann and members of the City Council. Uh, just, it is a, thank you for the opportunity to be before you this evening. Um, we'd like to take a little bit of time to, my, my name is Bob Brady, and, uh, I also like to introduce Gary Washburn, who will be also speaking after me, um, as well. Gary is a former, uh, planning commissioner, council member, and mayor in the city of, uh, Long, Lake Elsinore, and I just wanted to make that recognition of him as well, and I will introduce him when I've completed my presentation as well. First of all, I want to thank the council for their consideration and deliberation, thoughtful deliberations you've already taken and the questions you've asked with regards to this matter. It is one that is, it is somewhat, can be somewhat complicated. Um, there are concerns about the operation and continue with the operation of the business at this location. We've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Sta, Mr. Leclerc and other members of the staff. I personally had the opportunity to meet with your city manager, and, um, congratulations to him as well for his appointment, and to you as well for appointing him as city manager. I think you made a wise decision there as well, but I just wanted to recognize the, uh, the staff's, uh, willingness, at least in working with Mr., your city manager, to work with us and try to help resolve these issues, and that's what we're trying to do. We want to resolve this issue, come to something that's a win-win for both the city and for Mr. Falco as well, and we understand a lot of the concerns, with my background in city government as well as a former community development director, I understand a lot of these concerns also. Just to give some background about Accurate Leak Locators, it is a family-run operated business. It is, it is really, rather than calling it a plumbing business, it's a plumbing service contractor is what they provide. They do not do any fabrication on the site, they do not do any repairs of equipment at the location. It's primarily administrative office use that occurs on the property. There are vehicles and there's some equipment, some, uh, that are stored, like, for example, water tanks may be stored on the, on the property as well, but primarily, the customers are out, they go out to their customers, uh, they do not have customers come to the property, there are no retail sales that are occurring, um, on the property as well, so it's really not a business that's generally open to the public. There are employees that do work there in the administrative office, employees do come there that have van, to pick up a van, or one of the technicians may pick up a van from the property, go out in the morning, uh, come back in the afternoon or, or later in the day. So there is that type of activity that occurs on the property, but it is a, a commercial, uh, it's a contractor's service type of a business and not, I wouldn't classify it, calling it a plumbing business in the sense of, you think of a Ferguson Pipe Company or other plumbing, where you got plumbing supplies and materials, that's not the type of business, uh, that is, that is operated there. And again, this is a business that is owned by Tony and Rosa Falco, and, um, they, they are desirous of working with the city, they want to obtain the proper approvals and permits from the city, and that's why they've gone through this process to, uh, see if this use and, and get the approval from the council with regards to the use being a, 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 a use that would be considered similar to other uses in that zone. Um, as has been stated, um, a lot of the uses, as Mr. Leclerc has indicated, that this is for residential and agricultural type of uses, um, and it's for primarily those types of uses that are within the A1 zone itself. There are a lot of commercial uses that are allowed under the existing A1 zoning regulations, and what we're proposing and what we looked at are the impacts that those uses have in terms of the similarity and the characteristics. So if the plumbing business would be allowed there, would they have any greater impacts or any different impacts than the uses that are already allowed there in terms of parking, noise, employees coming to the site, and so on, those types of impacts, setbacks, those kinds of things as well, how they operate their business and what they would have on adjacent, the impacts they would have on adjacent land uses. As was mentioned, back in September, the planning commission and the staff did review and consider, um, an item in terms of the silk screening business with regards to allowing a non-agricultural type of use to be allowed in the A1 zone. And at that time, the planning commission made a determination that the silk screening business, which is really technically considered a manufacturing type of business, if you look under the SIC types of codes and so forth, it could be considered a manufacturing type of use, uh, that use was allowed as a, and found to be allowed as a use that would be permitted with a conditional use permit in the A1 zone. And so in September of that, September 10th, uh, that determination was, um, that discussion occurred with the planning commission, and I just wanted to read that, uh, Mr. Leclerc stated in his report of September 10th that, uh, and this is the wording that was in the staff report, "An argument can, however, also be made that the agricultural zone, due to the large common sizes of the properties so designated, the minimal development of such properties and the nature of currently permitted uses within the light agricultural zone, that this zone allows and even encourages diversity of land use activities, including commercial activities. Further, it could be argued that a low-density use such as silk screening, with review of the specific use, property circumstances, under a conditional use permit, may be sufficiently similar in potential impacts to many agricultural zone uses. For example, fraternal halls, churches, private schools, real estate offices, and wineries are uses permitted with a plot plan approval, and auction sales yards, packaged fertilizer storage, commercial stables, and oil production are uses permitted with approval of a conditional use permit within the A1 zone. These uses would require structures, employees, setbacks, storage, delivery, screening, and signage, all with possible associated impacts." And what I would say is that this same argument could be made for the plumbing contracting service type of business that Mr. Falco runs, um, at his location, and that that same type of a determination, the council can make that determination, that this would be, the impacts of this particular use would be similar to those already allowed, including the silk screening business, which is a non-agricultural or residential type of use that was allowed in that zone. Um, and again, in the, in the staff report, it does indicate several concerns and issues and identifying, um, with regards to a plumbing business, if you allowed a plumbing business to come in into, or allowed it under the, uh, A1 zone, that this may allow a number of other types of uses to come forward. Again, I would clarify, and I, and I would ask the council to consider that, it's not a plumbing business, but a contractor's service type of a business that we're talking about here. They're not, there's no selling, there's no manufacturing, there's no fabrication, um, the storage of materials, I know the hazardous materials, the asbestos, that is no longer occurring, um, on the property, that does not, it's not picked up or brought to that property, uh, any longer as well, so that is not an issue with regard to this use on that particular property. There was also the concern, uh, was mentioned about noise and dust, uh, from this existing use, and I don't know if any of the planning staff had been out to, uh, and visited Mr. Falco's, uh, site to determine what, uh, if those were issues or concerns, or if those were just based on the adjacent property owner's complaints and concerns, but again, we'd invite any of the, any of the, uh, staff, any of the city council to come out, I think Mr. Falco would be more than happy to show you what how and what he does on his property in terms of his operation of his business as well. And, and many of the uses that are allowed in the A1 zone, whether it's by right or through a plot plan approval or through a conditional use permit, are, uh, could be considered more intense type of uses than the plumbing contract service type of business. And again, we're looking at the impacts in terms of traffic, traffic generation, trip generation, noise, light, number of employees, of those types of impacts that would be occurring. This type of use that, uh, this plumbing service business that's Mr. Falco is running would not be any greater than some of the uses that are already allowed within the A1 zone. Again, we, we believe that the planning commission, in reviewing this, did not actually give full consideration and weren't consistent in determination of this plumbing service business being, uh, a, a use that could be similar in characteristics, operational nature, and so forth, uh, as the silk screen, as they did with the silk screening business. Again, the silk screening business, we're not saying a silk screening business and a plumbing operation business are the same types of operations, but they have the same types of impacts or could have same types of impacts in terms of, the silk screening has employees that come there, they have deliveries of trucks and vehicles, uh, that come there as well. It's a, there's a large building that they currently operate in, it, it can technically be considered a manufacturing type of use as well. So this precedent has been set by the planning commission already, and, um, it is our belief that the commission didn't fully take into consideration that approval that they did back in September and October, uh, by adopting the resolution in October for that particular use when they considered Mr. Falco's, uh, appeal on March 24th. What we are requesting the council is to interpret the municipal code to find that the plumbing contractor service business is an activity that is sufficiently like or similar to the impacts of other uses that are in that, uh, zone or allowed in the agricultural, light agricultural zone. And I, I'm, I'm really appreciative to hear that there is some, uh, consideration by staff that possibly there could be some sort of an agreement or something could be worked out, because we really haven't heard that, um, previously in order to allow, you know, Mr. Falco to stay at this location. Ideally, Mr. Falco would like to stay at this location and be able to operate here for, uh, you know, another five years. Um, that would be the ideal situation. Um, that may not necessarily be possible under this, under the proposals that are being considered here tonight, but he would definitely like additional time to be allowed to stay at the property and to operate if this is in fact, um, denied by the, uh, the, uh, city council. We would also like to, uh, propose a, maybe a fourth consideration or a fourth option listed under the recommendations, and this would be that the city council could direct staff to include the contracting, uh, service uses as part of the new development code requirements, um, and through this process then allow Mr. Falco to remain at the property until the new development code standards have been established for the A1 zone. This would help to resolve the issue and concerns of that the staff has. It would then, um, allow Mr. Falco the time that he would need to, uh, operate at that location or continue operation at that location, and then if it could be worked in, then he could be, uh, allowed to, uh, be located at that location, um, then under the new development code regulations and requirements. The other point I wanted to make is that the, the discussion has been talked about a development code requirement, uh, or amendment essentially to allow a plumbing service type of use, uh, to be located in the A1 zone. I believe that's what Mr. Leclerc had suggested as another alternative or possibility. And in essence, really making a finding, if the council can make a finding this evening that, in fact, the plumbing service type of business, the contractor's plumbing service type of use is consistent within the A1 zone, that essentially is accomplishing the same task of a development code amendment. It would add it in as a use allowed in the A1 zone, whether it's through, uh, permitted by right or a, a, uh, plot plan approvals required, or even a conditional use permit, but it could help, uh, and it could accomplish that same task in a much shorter timeframe as well. So that's just another option that, that the city council may want to consider as We all, also are, the, the, the costs, uh, Deputy Mayor Edgerton mentioned the costs that have been associated with this appeal. The total cost so far to appeal this decision to the planning commission, to the city council has been $9,385, uh, just to bring it to this point as well. That doesn't include any of the, uh, the citations or fines from code enforcement, which are in the thousands of dollars, the last figure I had heard was $12,000, I don't know if that's still an accurate number or not, but we're asking that if there's some way that the city council could consider, or at least allow staff to work with us to resolve or reduce or eliminate those, uh, those fees, those citation fees, uh, that would also be a big help and go a long way in helping to try to resolve this, uh, this matter. Regardless of whether Mr. Falco has a lot of money or not, it's still a lot of money that he's already paid out and he's already had to spend to get to this point before the city council. And just the last point I wanted to make is that Mr. and Mrs. Falco are not only business owners within the city of, of Menifee, they're also residents and property owners, and they desire to stay here and keep their business in Menifee. They, they don't want to move to another location, they would like the opportunity to, to stay here, find another property if necessary, um, but, or when new, another new property is built, so they can expand their business in the city of Menifee. Mr. Falco's very, been very supportive, very active in the community, um, he is, he's been participating in community events and, and as, as, as Councilman August mentioned, and, um, we would just, you know, request that the city council give consideration to allowing this use in some form or another to continue at its current location, uh, and we'd be appreciative of that effort. Uh, at this time, I'd like to introduce Gary Washburn.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, nice to see you this evening.
Nice to see you this evening. Bob and I have been asked to, to address this problem, and it is a complicated problem a little bit. Having been in the public service for about 18 years, having sat where you've sat, have been dealing with land use conflicts like this, it is something that you have to ponder, look for solutions, and hopefully try to satisfy the needs of both the city and the citizens within the community. I always looked for, to try to be fair and consistent as best I could. It was not always easy, but that's what we have to do in this line of work. I've walked Mr. Falco's property many times. I have 11 by 17 I'll pass around, I don't know how you want to do this.
You can put it up on the screen with the elbow there.
Could you help me with this? Oh, right there.
Flip it around. 360.
Okay, let's see this.
There you go.
Actually, 108. Oh, okay. As you can see, Mr. Falco's operation is here, is here, and the Tri-Lake Sportswear, which the Planning Commission approved the, the ability for their manufacturing use to, to go there, which is just a stone's throw away from his operation. There's a lot of history with this project. Mr. Leclerc brought that up. We've had meetings with staff on successfully solving the problem, at staff level, and attorneys that attended the meeting as well. But we tried to do so, to try to solve the problem. With these use determination application we, we brought forward to the Planning Commission, we really had, in my interpretation, a 3-2 positive, allowing for that use, until the asbestos question came up, in which the, the one gentleman decided he would flip on it, so went 3-2 the other way. So it was a 3-2, as I saw it, in favor of having that determination in, in the code. As, as Bob has mentioned, the, the asbestos is not an issue, that company no longer picks up there, they only had one barrel over the years that was there that was removed, and so that's, that shouldn't be of a, of a problem at all whatsoever. Even, even earlier staff, Lisa Gordon had emails with Mr. Falco on trying to resolve this, and gave him the steps to do so, plot plan approval, CUP, things of that sort. So that, that started, but didn't get completed, and I think that's where staff got a little sideways with Mr. Falco, because he didn't feel like it was completed. So we stepped in, Mr. Brady and myself, and we're trying to get this process completed. Again, I don't want to reiterate, but Mr. Falco's business is not a heavy pipe and supply, is not a typical retail brick business at a location. He is a contractor, a service contractor, and as Mr. Brady mentioned, under the SIC code, which is the code giving classifications to businesses, there is plumbing contractors, this is hard to read, I don't know how to get closer, but if you, just bring it down, if you read it, it basically says that a plumbing, plumbing and heating and air conditioning business is, work performed may include new additions, alterations, maintenance, and repairs outside service related. Their contractors, their mechanical contractors, commercial and industrial installation, they go outside, you don't come, they don't have customers coming to them, they are hired by insurance companies to go out to a home that has a leak in the concrete because of earthquake or whatever, and they solve the problem at the site, wherever it may be, in the city of Menifee, Riverside, Elsinore, wherever. So it is a contracting service. On the other side, the other one is really a, the Tri-Lakes Silk Screening is really a manufacturing company. So when the Planning Commission did, in my estimation, when they allowed the, the manufacturing use, that was a step that opened the door. And now I think staff is saying, "Oh, we don't want any more of this." Well, you've already opened the door, and to be fair and equitable, I think you either have to come to a solution, a bigger picture solution, or you have to come to an agreement with Mr. Falco and solve it, but you're going to have these repeated problems coming down the pike. Another exhibit I want to show is that in 2008, SCAG will do, every year, they, every four years, I think, they do a land use analysis, all the cities through San Fernando and Riverside County. So in 2008, SCAG did this land use classification, and what you'll see, if I get it right, I only took a snapshot, using GIS, I took a snapshot of all the uses in 2008. And really what you'll find is that number of uses, whether it's education, business, contractors, are spattered all through the area, and they don't jive with the county, they don't jive with your land use. So to go forward and come up with a new land use zoning classification is probably the best thing you could do. But in the meantime, you're having many businesses that are saying, "Hey, I can't do business in the city of Menifee, I've got to relocate because code enforcement's hitting me, planning's hitting me, I don't fit, I worked in the county, it worked then, you've adopted it, become a city, and now I'm having this difficulty." So that is starting to have an impact. This exhibit is showing just that Mr. Falco's neighbors, all but one, support his operation, have never had a problem with him, and I think that that speaks for itself.
Can you describe the legend, because we can't quite see it? You say that all of his neighbors support, describe the color coding.
Sorry, there's, there you go, a little better. So all the, this is Mr. Falco's operation here, this is the neighbor, Garcia's the only ones that have made any complaints. Everybody else, all around the neighborhood have supported, have no problems with his operation.
Thank you.
And they've written letters, I think we, we might have submitted them last time at Planning Commission. I think the rural small business ordinance that's being proposed by a group of citizens to help solve this problem might be a way to resolve Mr. Falco's issue, as well as the bigger picture issue of conflict between business uses in zones that don't fit, partly because you adopted the county zoning. Also, I want to say that, as a broker, I am also working with Mr. Falco to help find a new location. I found a location in Lake Elsinore, he could move there, and we made an offer, the offer was a backup position, but again, it's a Lake Elsinore, and we'd be happy to take his business there. We've only found two, three locations in the city of Menifee, two on Palomar Street, and one over in Ziders, which is metal buildings that, that really aren't going to work out. Here's, here's one, a 32,000 square feet building on Palomar, but it's a little too big, they're asking a little bit too much, so it's a little difficult to jump into that. Another building, also on Palomar, larger acreage, smaller size, and a metal building of around 8,000 square feet total, concerns with equipment theft, quality of operation, so that's, that's a little bit of a concern. But the Lake Elsinore one would fit for him, but it's just, it's just a drive, and we may make an offer on that, I don't know. But point is, I'm trying to help resolve it in that fashion, if, if need be. But he'd rather stay in the city of Menifee if he could. Actions, I think, I would concur with Mr. Brady, I would say that if I were in your, in your shoes, I would probably, well, the one way you could do it is you could deny, reject the Planning Commission's findings, have your own findings, and direct staff to come up with a method to do that, whether it's through a plot plan, or a conditional use permit, or to table it, and pending the small business application, put him in that category, and solve it that way as well. But I would like to ask the council, at least whatever action you take this evening, to try to at least tell the citation department to stop fining him repeatedly, because now he's up to $12,000, if we're in a, in a solution situation. That would help at least sweeten the, the side on the cost factor for him. So I would appreciate that if you decide to go in that direction. Be happy to answer any questions or, or comments after whatever staff members make their comments, before you close the public hearing, so we can have the right to come back and, and counter what they may say. So thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, do we have additional public testimony?
We do. Would that be the only people speaking, opening from the applicant, or the appellant, I'm sorry? And then we're moving to public testimony now?
Is there anybody else representing the appellant that wishes to speak? Hearing none, please proceed with other public testimony.
Yes, Your Honor, Jerry Lopez.
I am here in behalf of Falco, I am one of his neighbors, and honestly, he has done a lot for the community. If he didn't have a sign up there at one point, I would have not known he was in business. And that's because he did put up a backyard leak, he did also fix the driveway, he put a covert in it, and he's done a lot to improve the property. I only live like three houses down from him, and that's about all I really have to say, but thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker.
You're speaking about the Planning Commission and their vote. Two of the members that voted on that before the meeting had said that they had had interactions with Tony Falco. You all sit here, and you put him on a high horse, saying how, and you bring him out, and say, "He could, nothing could have been done without him there." The two should have been recused. If you talk about it, one of them actually talked, under oath, said that they did discuss the situation of the property. You can't do that. And with you guys holding him up, we can already see we're not going to get a fair shake. And speaking about money, ask Tony Falco how much we have to put up, because he's suing us, okay? We've got money involved in this too now.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good, good evening. My name's Manuel Garcia, and talking about the Falcos, they, he's, he's talking like it's a regular business from '95. They come in at 5:45 in the morning, and I have a log of all the trucks that have come in before that time. They make all kinds of noise, they dump whatever they work with, they dump it in their, in their bin, and make all kinds of noise. Some of them don't leave till nine o'clock. They're loading their trucks, they're banging doors, talking out loud, swearing. Mr. Falco himself has, has stood up in his porch and swore to one of his drivers about getting the F truck out of here. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Josie Garcia, and I'm not the same person I was when you first met me. I don't know if it's the stress that's coming from Mr. Falco's business, or the pollutants that he's spreading out all over the neighborhood, not only my neighborhood, but about a mile around, he's putting this stuff. When I met Mr. Falco, he said, "I am going to live here, this is going to be our home." I was happy to have what seemed like a nice neighbor, and I'm not saying he's a bad man, I'm just saying he knows his worth, he knows what to say. I've heard a lot of educated people here, I made it up to high school, I've heard a lot of terms that, that I don't quite understand, and I have to think real hard about it. He's suing us now for mental distress. Mental distress, and stress looks like this. I look in the mirror, I don't recognize myself, I got out of the hospital on Sunday, I've been in the hospital at least four times in the last months. Now call it stress, call it illness, call it what you may, but when I go out to my This is my retirement home. When I look out there, I'm just sick. Three, three, four weeks ago, he wants to make everything really nice, he chopped down every tree on his property. It's not a home where somebody lives, it's a complete commercial property. When I washed, used to wash my dishes, all I could see was the bright lights coming from his place. I avoid the yard, I avoid outside, this is not a life for a person to live who has waited so long. I, I've raised my children, I've done fostering, I've done all kinds of things to help my other communities, and I don't think that I deserve to have to live next to a place that looks like, I mean, East LA, all the trees are cut, and, and then he put a border on there, there is absolutely no greenery on there, there isn't a pot, a plant, there is nothing, it is just a commercial property. Whether their trucks are coming in and out, it doesn't make any difference.
That's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Push. I am the closest neighbor to Mr. Falco. My home is, is not even 100 yards from his. The lights don't bother me, the noises don't bother me, nothing really there bothers me at all. As far as dust and, and things like that, I get more dust from my house from Hook Lane than I do from his property. And as far as acceptable businesses, I don't know if, if Mr. Leclerc would know that, but under the A1, I could actually start a tractor business, a repair business out of my property on A1. So that's listed right in there as an acceptable business. So I don't know why a dispatch system of a plumber would be a problem. I mean, it's not, it doesn't make a mess, it doesn't, I just don't understand. I don't understand why I could actually build and repair tractors there, but he can't dispatch trucks out of there. So I mean, if you want to read, I don't know exactly where it's at, I remember reading it, but tractor repair is permitted under A1, which is a commercial repair business. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow Councilmen. I would like to say first, I am very sympathetic to Ms. Garcia, and I'm sorry to feel, hear that you feel...
Could you speak into the mic more for us?
You do that to me all the time. I am sympathetic to Ms. Garcia, and I'm sorry that you're having the problems that you're having. However, Tony Falco is a resident of this city, he's a family man, and he's a taxpayer, and he happens to be on A1, and the city kind of happened to let him go there, I believe. What he does on that property is no greater impact than with farming equipment would be. And as far as I know, farm equipment is allowed on A1. Trucks going in the morning and leaving in the evening is no more negative impact than any other vehicle. And I, I would just like to see some mediation go on for a change, you know? I think we can resolve this without the fines, and without the bullying. I think we can do this, if we just put our heads together. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Peter Guamo.
Thank you, Councilman. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but since my property's been brought up 20 times, I thought it was appropriate that I come up and spend a couple of seconds talking about my manufacturing silk screening business that was approved in September. It's not a manufacturing facility, and I'll, Mr. Washburn will let me borrow one of his slides. My property, of which I am a resident on my property, that I run a silk screening operation, which is adhering a design to a T-shirt, not a manufacturing facility, and I haven't been approved to run that business on that property. I am only in the first stage of a very long process, that I am working with the city attorney... that I am working with the city attorney and the city planning department on getting my property permit, approved to operate. With that being said, this is my property right here. It is gated, I have my residence on there and my operation does not affect any of my neighbors that I know of. And again, I want to just clarify, I haven't been approved to run a silk screening operation in Menifee, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for clarifying. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Those are all the public speakers unless you call up the appellate again.
Is there anybody else in the audience that did not put in a slip that would like to speak this evening? Mr. Shigoya, please step to the microphone. State your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff. First thing I want to say is I want to just thank staff for taking the time to at least trying to find a mechanism for Mr. Leclerc to bring the rural business community together and make us part of the city. It's a big step and people in my neck of the woods are very satisfied with the progress that's being made so far. I wanted to speak on Mr. Falco's behalf.
Hello, Tony.
How are you doing?
What I wanted to say about Mr. Falco is the guy that I see right here is a guy I've known for, for many years. He's the go-to guy. When things are needed in the community, Tony's there. And, you know, when you talk about impacts on community, you know, there's gonna be a negative impact if Tony disappears from this community. You know, when he's forced to, you know, maybe his guys relocate. He's got quite a few employees that, that work in the area. I see his trucks, you know, all day doing stuff for my community. You know, I would just like you guys to, you know, give him some consideration, give him some time to get this sorted out. Hopefully he falls under the same guise of the business ordinance that you guys are creating right now. But he's not a bad guy. He's a business guy trying to make a living on a piece of land that he has a dream on. And let's, let's work together on this and hopefully we can, you know, we can all get through this and get this community back together and get that theater here and all those other good things that are coming. All right? Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shigoya. Any other speakers who wish to come that didn't have an opportunity? Please approach, state your name for the record.
Hello, thank you for listening to me. I'm actually Mr. Falco's neighbor. I feel that we are not here to.
State your name, please.
My name is Juanita Vazquez.
Thank you.
And I am a neighbor to Mr. Falco and Mrs. Falco. But I live in another, where's that map?
Pull it down, pull it down towards the bottom.
Go right up. You're right.
There you go.
I'm right here. And this is where the silk screening business is, okay? And this is a piece of property that Mr. Falco purchased recently before this one here is that we're talking about, okay? That particular property, when Mr. Falco moved in, actually, I'm not real sure if he lives there because he kinda goes and comes and also he runs, he was running that same business that we're talking about up here down there until my husband and I came and spoke to the city manager there. And it appeared that it just stopped. The, the going and coming with the traffic, it just terminated. But I didn't know we were here to talk about this other property up here. So I'm just, I'm just here as a concerned neighbor about the activities that occur with this kind of a business. We have a fence line with that property and we have horses and sometimes our horses are in full. Right now I have a mare in full. And the going and the coming with the traffic, I guess the bottom line is horses do not mix with plumbing. So that's kind of my own opinion on what I see. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vazquez. Anybody else? Please. You get to speak last.
My name is Terry Powers. There's one house between, the Push House is between my house and the property in the blue. None of the lights or the noise or anything affects me or bothers me. We're not offended in any way by his operation there. Tony actually came to us, we have a dirt road, Hook Lane, and asked us if we wanted the grindings to put down, that he could spare some. And he actually delivered it to us and we didn't ask him for anything. He, he came to us, asked us if we wanted it and provided it for our dirt road. And he's helpful in the community, he goes out of his way to be nice. And the house that she pointed out next door to hers, when the people moved out of it, it looked awful. And it's one of the nicest looking homes and properties. He's, he's made it really a lot of improvement on it and it looks great. And I just think he helps the community.
Thank you, sir. Last call. Yes, sir. Mr. Brown.
I don't know enough to completely address something, but I do think it's strange that, it, it seems as though code enforcement was sick on Mr. Falco. And to be honest, to the people in the audience, as far as I know, you can't take a man's livelihood just because you don't like the noise. I mean, it's what he does for a living. Are you asking him to quit everything and just get in line? Because quite frankly, there's places all over Menifee that are loud and noisy. If I live next to the freeway and I find it noisy, do I ban the freeway? No, I have to put up with it. And to Mr. Falco, I'm always been a small business supporter and I'd support you a hundred and ten percent. Frankly, the city needs to find a way to deal with this man so that he's not paying out of pocket and killing him to the point where he wants to run away. And all I see now is fines like crazy. I mean, I know people, friends of mine that have been fined thousands and thousands of dollars and it all goes hands in, hand in hand. Code enforcement, please, needs to relax, whoever I would speak to on that. I, I don't know what else to say other than I believe it's a civil rights issue and if you deny him his ability to do business here, I would, if I were Mr. Falco, I'd see him in federal court. So, thank you.
Now, before you step away, could you please state your name for the record for our recorder?
Yes, Eric Brown.
Thank you. All right, if there are here, are there any other speakers? Hearing none, the appellant has the floor. If the, Mr. Falco?
I'd just like to correct a couple of things. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the people that opposed, I want to thank the people that are for. Okay? I'm a businessman, I'm very sorry if I've offended Mrs. Garcia or anybody else. And I'm very sorry that Mrs. Garcia is sick. My mother just had a massive heart attack. Two months ago, my father had brain surgery. So, Mrs. Garcia, my heart goes out to you and I'm very sorry that you're ill. My property sits right here and the woman that stood up talked about this property. I live here, I gutted this house. This house was gonna be condemned by the city. My business does not run out of there or I would not be married to this lovely woman behind me. I never once ran any of my business trucks out of here. I used to drive a company truck home that had lettering on it. I no longer drive that. I drive a marketing car now that has no lettering and code enforcement has sat in front of my gates, but there is no business property there. And I also only run out of this business property over here. And anything that I can do to oblige, to accommodate or to come within compliance, I will properly do and I will do it to the letter of the law. Thank you for your time and I would like my consultants to speak now.
Mr. August, do you have a question?
I have a question for Mr. Falco and I'd like to point something out to some of the people in the audience. I did see Mr. Falco at the Better Together program, but the last time we met, I think we were in a, in a situation where you were actually calling for people to replace me, that's how I knew it. So it always hasn't been, we haven't always been in a good environment, so I just want people to know that. Question for you, have you embarked on a, are you on a CUP or a plot plan course with the city?
What's, what we're trying to get to, sir?
So you, okay, so you would be, you're, would be open to CUP plan or plot plan or anything like that?
Absolutely.
And just one other question, how do you get to nine thousand dollars in fees? Just not with regard to any citations or anything, but with regard to the appeals process, can you?
I would let my consultants take care of that because I just signed the checks, but they asked for them. But they know right where they go and they would be able to speak as far as staff goes and the city clerk. And, and again, they were just fees that come across, but I would like for my consultants to address that.
Before he comes up, let me ask you one more question. Your primary concern, I mean overriding concern is for you to be able to stay in the property for a period of time, which would maybe allow you to relocate somewhere else, correct?
That is correct. We're waiting for the, we're waiting for the commercial building to either one be built or find one for ourselves to move into, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Edgerton?
Mr. Falco, I understand you have more than one business. How many employees do you have in total, counting all of the businesses you have?
Well, I have four offices. I have a total of twenty-two employees, approximately nine trucks that are driven to my property run out of this location. There are several trucks stored at Orange County, there's one truck stored in LA and one truck stored in Corona. There's approximately three trucks that set overnight. And right now, there's a couple of trucks setting on my property because of the habitat and we brought all of our fleet, and I repeat, our trucks from Orange County, which is our big box truck, which we try to keep it out of the city, and we also have a trailer there. But normally, we have about twenty employees total. Remember that I have trucks that guys take home and then the helpers get into them trucks and they, that's what they, that's the traffic that induces into the property. They get into that truck and then they cover the Los Angeles, the Orange County, the Riverside and San Bernardino areas.
Do any of your employees live in Menifee?
Absolutely.
Quite a few of them?
I would say almost seventy-five percent. I think only two of them, three of them live in Elsinore.
So you, you have a business with twenty employees, many of them living in Menifee?
And approximately eighteen thousand dollars a month in gasoline tax.
Yeah, I, I guess I can't help it, but it occurred to me, very good point that Ms. Councilman August made about our state running Toyota to Texas. I hope we don't run your business out of Menifee, but thank you, sir.
I hope not either, thank you, sir.
Mr. Brady?
The, the fees that I referenced were for the appeals fees. There was an appeal fee of five thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars that was required to bring the appeal to the Planning Commission, to the city council. There was, I believe, a six hundred dollar fee for the city clerk's office and then they, whatever the balance, I don't have the number in front of me, but approximately another three thousand four hundred dollars or so for the appeal to bring it before the city council this evening. So that's how the number comes up to nine thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars for the appeal fees, which are actually probably the highest in the southwest Riverside County area.
Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Falco's team? Any questions from the council? Going once, going twice?
You're bringing it inside the rail.
The public hearing is closed at time eight fifty-four, we're now inside the rail. Council discussion on the matter not continuing to discuss with the public. And gentlemen, where are we with this matter? Mr. August?
I'm gonna go first here and I'll tell you, some things are, were brought up tonight for, that are, from the people that are representing Mr. Falco that I haven't, you know, they haven't thought about before. And I'd also like to say for the Garcias and the Falcos, this is unfortunate, it's a sad situation that it's gotten to this point and it makes our, my decision up here in the council much more difficult. I'm, I think by the end of the council, I'm gonna probably have to make a decision on, on what we're, what direction we're gonna go here, but I'm gonna wait and listen to comments from the other council members. There's a lot to digest here and frankly, things that I haven't considered. Mr., the fact that Mr. Leclerc had mentioned something about commercial being in there, I guess that's probably just hearsay and you're not gonna make any statements about that. Some other things. Now, I think somebody referenced the fact that you said commercial can work in, in the A1 zone areas. I'm not sure if you'd like to respond to that or not.
There are certain commercial uses that are allowed. For example, the tractor that was mentioned, the tractor repair, it's reasonable to have that kind of an activity in agricultural zone where tractors would be.
Okay, all right. And something, a couple of other things that I mentioned, the intensity versus the character. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the intensity, Mr. Falco, and I'm also a little bit bothered by the, by the character. I mean, when we try to change, you know, a service contractor from plumbing company and so on and so forth, we get a little, I get a little like, you know, what are we, what are we trying to do here? You know, change the color of an orange from yellow to yellow. So, and, and that doesn't, that doesn't really influence me too much, the argument that they made regarding that. Intensity and character, I can tell you, I, I'm probably, I, I do, I do not believe that the, your, the business does meet the qualifications for intensity and character of the A1 zoning. And I'm, I'm gonna keep an open mind here the rest of the evening. But, but I am very, very interested because of the situation you had with the county in 2010 when there wasn't real clear direction on your part. And I don't think that's your fault and I would certainly be willing to make a concession to you if, if, if I, I do vote to turn down your appeal or disapprove your appeal, for you to be able to stay in that property for, for a period of time which allows you to relocate. And that's my position right now until I hear all these other smarter people than me.
Councilmember Furman?
Well, as, as I see it, the, the two decisions that we do have to make are actually going down two different roads. If, if we deny, then there's another process that Mr. Falco can do, but that will facilitate him being able to stay on the property for an endless amount of time. Now, if we approve his appeal, I would say he'll be off within two years after he finds a building, all right? And I'm pretty, I, I'm confident that that will happen. And I'm, I am in favor of, of granting his appeal with the stipulation that when he finds a building in Menifee, he's off the property in two years. That is the easiest solution without dipping into his pocketbook any further and making him go through this process, which will make an amendment that he can stay there forever. So I think the best thing is a win-win that, that he'll be off the property in a period of time and delay all the code enforcement violations and grant his appeal.
Council, Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Well, I'm in, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Furman. I have, I have a couple of concerns. I guess my primary concern, again, as I've pointed before, I, I don't want the council to send a message to start off with all of the other businesses that we have in town that because we're a new city, don't meet this, they don't meet that. And frankly, I've heard, like I said, many, many complaints. And before I would want to take a decision where it was so thin and so close and such a murky area, I would prefer to see that we had, as I said before, what's on our, tonight, what's on our future agenda, workshop for business license, home-based business code enforcement as interrelated. Secondly, we're talking about precedent. And I think that's a fair concern of staff and I think that goes to the heart of what staff is saying. You go ahead and you set a precedent. But his representatives pressed very hard for the fact that there should be some differentiation when you're talking about a plumbing business. And there, as they point out, this is a plumbing service business. He's not doing retail plumbing out of there. He's not doing many things that would be. He's not doing many things that would be done in a plumbing business. And I would suggest that if for any reason we uphold the appeal of Mr. Falco, that the precedent we're setting is for a very narrow interpretation of what we mean by plumbing. And that would be our precedent. It would be a plumbing service business, but would not expand to the other kinds of business.
Mr. Denver?
Could you speak to what Mayor Protam just said, that narrow precedent, allowing more businesses in because of our decision?
Yes, I can. The issue would be for staff to enforce that. You saw the applicant's representative hold up a chart from, I don't remember what the, the book is, that lists all these uses, but you saw an entire page of uses that are considered basically the same.
It was a 2008 SCAG map, Southern California Association of Governments.
No, it's, it's a...
It's SAIC.
It's the SAIC.
Oh, the code, the code page.
It's the code page. And so you, you would have all those uses that would be similarly classified as a contract service activity. So by making this decision and associating it with a contract service activity, all those uses would then be allowed within that commercial zone because they would all be arguable that it would all be substantially similar to that activity. Yes, you do have the opportunity to enter into an agreement as an alternative to this code interpretation, which solves the very issue as well. And if you grant the appeal, then I would have to have advice from either our attorney or you from your attorney relative to establishing a timeframe for that. But even if you do establish a timeframe, during that timeframe, anyone else that chooses to call themselves a similar business to this would have the opportunity to start up and be allowed under those same circumstances.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, well, at a noble hearing, we have the right to define, as we give notice to staff, what we, what we expect out of the interpretation of what we accepted in reference to accepting this appeal.
Yes, you do and we would hope that it would be clear.
And my opinion would be to define it very narrowly, as his representatives described.
If you could define it very narrowly, that's, that is a decision that the council can make, yes.
Mr. Denver?
Did I hear you say that we can define it so narrowly that it has to do with plumbing, you know, exactly his business?
I doubt if you could define it so clearly that it would be only his business, but you would certainly narrow it down.
A business like his only?
Can I just address that very, very briefly? One of the important guidelines that you would have to follow is that zoning decisions can't be arbitrary and that goes way back to the Village of Euclid case, well-established. So I think to make an arbitrary cutoff could, that's something that could be challenged in the future because some other business is gonna say, wait a second, that's an arbitrary border that you've drawn. So that's the concern and that's what Mr. Leclerc is addressing, that by approving this as substantially the same type of use, that you might want to limit it in the future, but you're still going to get those requests coming in from businesses that fit within those categories and they're gonna be able to make that, that argument. And that's, that's the concern that staff has.
Wait, Mr. Denver, you still have the floor.
Let me let Mr. Edgerton talk and then I'll come back.
Mr. Edgerton?
Well, in reference to definition, for example, I can allow, under the law, people to have crowing fowls, but I can then go ahead and define it and say they will have no more than four crowing fowls. I can do the same thing with a plumbing business. I can narrow it to a definition of some aspect, in this case, of plumbing contracting service business.
But someone could walk in and say, my peacocks are simply crowing fowl and they would be allowed. You could ask someone that comes in with cockatoos that, that do that same thing. It's, even if you attempt to do it as narrowly as you would hope to, there are still opportunities for them to, for others to come in attempting to use that and it's always hazy. There's a little bit of expansion, a little bit and so forth.
Well, that's true, Mr. Leclerc, but when they do that, they have to go to the Planning Commission and get approval to go to peacocks. Or they'll have to get approval from the council because we will have defined it as four crowing fowls. And if anyone wants to come in with anything else, we have not set a precedent. They can make a request predicated on what we have said, but that isn't an automatic approval, is it?
If you establish that you have a limit, depends on how you define it. If you establish a code that says zero to four crowing fowls can be approved just as a discretionary approval, plot plan or conditional use permit, then you have that opportunity.
So when you, when you say depends upon how you define it, then you are saying that we can define it?
Define the procedure, yes. And you can define what is applicable to that procedure, yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Listening to the discussion and the information that's being put out here, if I could just suggest that this has been an unbelievable conversation and, in a good way. This is the process by which we have to adjust or to solve policy issues over disagreements with code, go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission makes a decision. When that decision isn't agreed upon, then it comes to council. So here we are and I've, I've heard that you, you've wrapped in and referenced for good, for a good thing, the Workshop for Business Licenses Home-Based Businesses Code Enforcement Interrelated. We've been working with some of the rural business owners in the rural community to, because one size doesn't fit all. There's a few issues with where we currently are with the current situation we're in with Mr. Falco. He doesn't live on the property, doesn't qualify for the provisional business license, which is, which is the issue of really where we're at. So to, to move from that issue, he asked for determination based on the code. So that fell to staff. Your community development director didn't believe that that fell within the code, agreed to take it to the Planning Commission, which came up with a determination, which is why we're here. If I could suggest, and you've still more discussing to do on this, that you uphold the Planning Commission's decision, but direct staff to work with Mr. Falco and give him a timeframe to move his business as he stated he, that's what he would like to do. I believe that staff could work directly with Mr. Falco and come to some agreement, whether it's noise, lights, timeframe of operation, amount of time to work to find a new location. We have worked with them a couple of times on some different opportunities for different locations, it didn't work out. So we've extended our economic development help that way, but that's, that's an option that staff and myself, we want to make sure that you're aware of that option, as related earlier in Mr. Leclerc's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Denver?
Can you also work on some of these or all of these fines?
If we're so directed, I believe I do have the authority under the code
Mr.
to assist in the administration of those fines and the reduction of said fines for the purpose of assisting him move to another location or to adhere to the conditions that you would have us place on the property while he's in existence there.
You still have the floor?
Let me, unless some, could I make a motion? Is it proper yet?
No.
I don't think so. Let me, what I, after we discuss, what I'd like to make a motion is along the line that we just heard this, our, Rob say, and let's see if we can just get this done. It's 10 minutes after nine, or I think we ought to take a break.
Mr. August?
What can I say?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Mr., those are my thoughts, pretty much what you just suggested, Mr. Denver.
Would someone like to make a motion to that?
But I, I would just wanted to address what Mr. Edgerton had to say and I, and he's one of the most brilliant legal minds in the city. That's what he tells me all the time. And I, and I, and I happen to listen to him very, very carefully all the time, but I, I really don't want to get involved with redefining, re-zoning, narrow issues versus wider issues and, and all that stuff because we're gonna just sit here being, be, with the same arguments down the road as Mr. Leclerc pointed out to us. So I'm, I do like Mr. Johnson's approach, but I'm certainly willing to listen to Mr. Furman and you.
Well, clarification on your point regarding what Councilman Denver said. Would you then be willing to add with your motion, giving Mr. Falco, say, three years or whatever it takes to, because it takes a long time to find a commercial property, but that's what he's intending to do. So if we give him that time and since this is an appeal, would you add within your motion that we rescind all of the fines that have currently been imposed?
It's his motion.
Well...
Yeah.
I'm asking you, is that part of what you're suggesting?
What I'm suggesting? I'm, I'm, I'm open to what the council has to say.
Okay. I'm gonna call upon the city attorney first.
Just, just a caution. It seems to me that, that Mr. Johnson's suggestion basically includes working with Mr. Falco to address those things, then coming back basically and having the council sign off on the, on the agreement, whatever the agreement may be, to move forward. And it would be appropriate at that time to consider whether you want to waive fines or whatever, but the council will ultimately be in a position of making that, that decision.
Thank you. Mr. Furman?
Now, first of all, everybody's making a big issue like this. There's just dozens of people that are going to be doing this. We have one case in five years where a new business come into this town, all right? We're not bringing crowing fowl businesses and all that other stuff. We got one business that's here that we've got to deal with. Now, everything you suggested about the, the fines and everything will automatically, if I'm not clear, I'll ask the city attorney, if we approve Tony's appeal, all that goes away. He's allowed to stay there for two years till he finds his building. Or once he finds his building, he has two years to get off his property. That, I think, is the best solution that's not gonna take any more staff time, no more council meetings. It'll be determined tonight, tonight, if we agree with his appeal. Is that not right, Mr. Attorney?
That is not right.
Okay, clarify, clarify me.
See, the only thing that is before you this evening is the appeal of the determination of the
Of the definition.
similar land use. That is the only thing that is before you. Nothing is before you about the code enforcement action, the fines or anything else.
So that has to be a separate issue?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Denver?
Could we tonight, this is a suggestion, could we tonight take Mr. Johnson's proposal, let him determine the, had him work out the fine issue with Mr. Falco, let him work out the details, we've given him instruction, three years, work it all out and don't bring this back to us anymore. Just work it out and be done with it. We don't need to see this again. We just heard from a councilman, this is the first time, the only time ever we're gonna hear of it again, so let's not bring it back.
City Attorney?
You certainly can give him authority to work with Mr. Falco and settle the matter and resolve it.
And I so move.
The motion, if you're gonna make a motion...
Hold on, we're not, that's Greg wants to...
No, I would just make one modification, which you said, why don't, if we're gonna let Mr. Johnson speak with Mr. Falco, why don't you let them work out a time agreement? Maybe it's less than three years, who knows?
Change my motion, if you'll second.
So did I hear you, okay. Before I ask for clarification of what your motion is, I'd like to hear from Mr. Johnson again and then the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would also like clarification. This is, this is, this is a policy decision and I will carry out the policy decision, but I need some things in place. You'd understand where you are with the length of time and then the direction to, to cure those things. So I think that's important for me to have consensus or direction from council because I don't want to go do something and then have an issue with it later. So, so I'd love Paul, a clear policy direction would be great.
I have a question to the man.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Furman.
If we approve his appeal, would does that make it easier for you to work out and give you direction to?
The city attorney can follow up with that, but my answer would be no.
And I concur in that.
So it makes it harder?
Yes.
Mr. Edgerton?
Well, I'm, I'll go along with the majority of the council. My preference would be to approve the gentleman's appeal because I'm concerned we're gonna be sitting here facing more and more small businesses. I don't think that's where we want to be. But I do think, instead of telling the city manager to work it out, that if this is what we're gonna do, we ought to give the city manager direction and that is to rescind all of those fines that so far have been imposed upon Mr. Falco. That same thing is occurring with a lot of other small businesses as we speak.
Mr. Denver, before I call on you, go ahead. Do you want to make a modification?
I take that as a modification. Let's vote and get it over with. He has three years, you've got...
No.
No.
Let me, let me, I have not asked a question yet. I let you four banter. What I heard the council say collectively in, in varying degrees is that the majority appears to not agree with the definition of the agriculture, the use in the agricultural zone, in the A1. That's what I heard. Secondarily, I also heard a willingness of the council to give direction to staff to enter into some sort of settlement negotiation with Mr. Falco. So in, my question to you, Madam Attorney, is if we give direction to staff to enter into negotiations with Mr. Falco on length, on fees, on fines, on structure, on time, does that indeed have to come back for ratification by us or can we give him that authority tonight?
You can give him that authority this evening. This is fundamentally a code enforcement matter
Very well.
that would not come back to you, that is within the administrative control of the city manager to begin with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Edgerton?
If you don't give definitive direction to the city manager about time and about fines, you're gonna leave the man hanging. You're telling staff to negotiate with him. Well, staff's been negotiating with a lot of small businesses and they're screaming bloody murder. And we have to get together and determine what our policy is in reference to small business. But as far as Mr. Falco tonight, I'm prepared to support our city manager on this, but I want to set a time certain and rescind those fines so that we can move forward.
Denver, what's your motion?
My, I have a motion, three years, let the count, let the city manager work it out. See, the only problem I have with rescind, saying the words rescinding all the, the fines, we don't know what they all, the detail of each of them are. Let them work it out. There may be a hundred dollar fine in there that's due and, and he says, yeah, let, let them work it out. If he doesn't like it, he can come back to us. And the, the third thing is, is you said, we don't like what's in the A1 zone. That's, that's not the case for me. I want the A1 zone to be left alone. That's the whole reason I'm doing all this, is I think it ought to be agricultural.
No, we're saying the same thing.
Oh, I heard you say that we don't like the way that A1 zone is, is determined.
No, what I meant to say in the context of this appeal, this very narrow definition as Mr. Claire, Leclerc so eloquently articulated, what the issue is before us is, does this, does his business fit within the A1 definition? I simply said, I don't believe that it does.
No, it doesn't.
And I heard others say the same thing.
Right. And then the last thing I want to say is, the way we handle the appeal, we just don't deal with it. We're just ignore it.
City Attorney?
Can't ignore it.
No, I, I think, you can't ignore it, well, you could, but, but the better, the better course of action...
You don't have to vote on it. It's not gonna be controversial. It goes away.
The, the better course of action would be to uphold the Planning Commission determination because that determination is that it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a similar use in an agricultural zone. And then direct the negotiation of an agreement with Mr. Falco.
You're extending the meeting.
And whatever, with whatever parameters you want to add.
Okay, so is your motion to uphold the Planning Commission's denial and to give a three-year time period to Mr. Falco with allowing staff to negotiate some remedy with related, relationship to the fines?
Yes.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. August. Mr. Furman, do you have a?
Can I make a just clarification?
Of course.
Okay. Before I second that, I know I can't take it back now, but... Now, you're gonna include three years or you're, you're not gonna let the manager, you don't want to let the city manager work that out with Mr. Falco?
I was, but the pressure is three years. Let them work it out. That's our recommendation to them.
How about three years or... How about three years or sooner? Would that be okay to add that in there?
Language.
You can work on the language.
And I'm still uncomfortable with the fines, because can we work that out? Can Mr. Falco and Mr. Johnson actually work those, work that out? Can we ask Mr. Falco if he's willing to do that?
That was part of the motion, so you're directing me to work that out.
Okay. And, Mr. Furman, there's a, okay, before we, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Furman, you have the floor.
First of all, for everybody's edification, there's no farming done in this city anymore, other than maybe growing wheat somewhere. Nobody farms anymore. The agricultural zone is going to be gobbled up by developers, or changed on the next general plan to rural residential. All right? So the agricultural zone is dying, okay? All the farms are being bought up, and nothing's left. So I'm gonna make a substitute motion, that we approve Tony Falco's appeal, with the conditions that he's, that he finds a place and is offered in three years. But by agreeing with his appeal, I think that would remove some of the problems that Mr. Johnson has. So my motion is that...
That is a substitute motion.
That's a substitute motion.
Is there a second on that substitute motion to approve the appeal, allowing time to find Mr. Falco a place to relocate?
Well, Tom, I don't think you have the votes, but I'll second your motion. We'll find out.
You don't know that.
Call for the question. On the matter of approving the appeal, with allowing time for three years, up to three years to relocate.
Yes, sir, on the substitute motion. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
No.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
No.
Mayor Man?
No.
Motion fails.
On the original motion, to uphold the, adopt the resolution to uphold the planning commission's decision, direct staff to negotiate up to three years or less, and to work out a resolution on some of the fines, as motioned by Mr. Denver and seconded by Mr. August. Call the question, please.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Mayor Man?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This matter is concluded. We are going to take a fifteen-minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, we are read adjourned at time 9:38, and before us this evening are two additional public hearings contained in the same agenda item. And agenda item 11.2, public hearing, community development block grant to 2012-13 and 2013-14 annual action plan, substantial amendment and approval of 2014-15. So what we've got to do is, we have to open a, after a staff report, we have to open a public hearing, call for testimony, close it, take action on one resolution, and then do the same thing on the other for the second hearing. So with that said, Mr. Johnson, is there a staff report? A brief staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert Lennox, Community Services Director, has a brief report for you.
Thank you, city manager, honorable mayor, and council members. I will keep this very brief.
To the extent that you can do the presentation justice, I mean, I don't watch, don't cut corners, okay?
Sure. This item is for the public hearing of the substantial amendment to the community development block grant for fiscal year 2012-13 and 13-14. One second. As you'll recall, City Menifee is an entitled, entitlement community participating in the CDBG program. The city receives a grant funding to provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and opportunities to expand economic opportunities within the city. The annual allocation is determined by HUD, using a formula which includes several measures of community need. Eligible activities include public services, construction of public facilities and improvements, rehab of residential and non-residential structures, activities related to energy conservation, and provision of assistance for businesses to carry out economic development and job retention activities. Excuse me. The 2013-14, every year, every five years, a consolidated plan has to be developed and adopted by council and submitted to HUD for approval. The annual action plan must be developed and adopted by council and submitted for approval each year, which is part of what we're doing this evening. And then an annual action plan identifies specific projects, programs to be funded through the annual allocation. Some of the programs and projects included within the program year 12-13 and 13-14 annual action plans did not expend all the funds and are pending additional actions. Public services and/or planning administration program activities cannot be rolled over to future program years pursuant to the HUD regulations, which set a maximum percentage, which is 15% for public services and 20% for planning and administration, of the annual action, annual allocation to be expanded on these types of programs and activities. Unused public services and/or planning administration funds can be reprogrammed in other eligible programs and projects. And so pursuant to the adopted citizens' participation plan, substantial amendment has been prepared, noticed and made available for review, public comment. It was noticed on April 7, 2014, which abides by the 30-day period. Through substantial amendment, the 2013-14 annual plan, action plan, and 13, I'm sorry, 13-14 action plans were amended to reallocate reprogrammed funds from various projects and programs, including, or included in the respective annual action plans into projects and programs included in the 14-15 action, annual action plan. All allocation and reprogramming, reprogramming included within the substantial amendment align with the needs and objectives identified in the consolidated plan for, from community input received during the citizen participation process. And as such, here are some of the amounts and projects that were considered in their relative, or respective years. 13-14, the Quell Valley Park project, in an amount of 100,000, $107,920. This did not carry through, as the proposed location did not get transferred to the city. And additionally, the park in question was not a general benefit to the residents at large. It's an HOA park. And so a transfer of property has to occur first, and the park has to be a general use, or for general use by the public, in order, for it to be an eligible project. In addition, there was leftover funds from the allocation to Valleywide for $10,000 in scholarships for youth programs and activities. The reprogram, or recommended reprogram amount is $6,117.15. Additionally, about $7,465.29 was unused for alternatives to domestic violence, comprehensive domestic violence program. In 13-14, there was a remainder of $1,366.34 from Fair Housing Services that was unused. And then additionally, it was $10,000, the full allocation that was for the Sibley House, celebrating the steps program that was unused and also has been identified for reprogramming, for a grand total of $132,869.13. So the amendment details in the total that I just mentioned is recommended for reprogramming from program years 12-13 and 13-14 to the Case Sanisero's Senior Center Phase II Rehabilitation Project, included as part of the 2014-15 annual action plan. As mentioned earlier, the recommended action is to conduct the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the 13-14 and 14-15 annual action plans, and authorize staff to submit substantial amendment to HUD. That concludes my report.
And that is for the first resolution, or does that encompass both resolutions?
That is just for the first one only.
Mr. Edgerton?
Well, certainly one of the CDBG funds, but it seems like they come with a real bitter When you deal with HUD, and that's what we're talking about here, right? Then, as you point out in the discussion item here, HUD orders a certain minimum requirement, certain entitlement for jurisdiction. I spoke with a councilperson from Hemet today that was complaining about the fact that they had group housing imposed upon them because of HUD. We have groups of parolees coming in, and that kind of thing. And I know we had to deal with that in Long Beach. And once you go this route, you take it out of the hands of the council, and they will designate something, sometimes an apartment building in a residential area, and that will be filled with parolees. Those do become significant police problems, as they do in Los Angeles, as they certainly did in Long Beach. Do we have any way around it?
Well, this first item, this first public hearing is simply for the reprogramming of unused funds from the two years that were mentioned, relative to the move forward for 14-15, and what's been done in the past. None of those funds have been set aside for housing. All of them have only been for education of fair housing, so essentially seminars for first-time home buyers, not for actual housing.
So this doesn't open the door for that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Not to your knowledge?
Mr. Johnson?
Correct. If I could, I believe that's under the auspices of a housing authority, which we fall under the county for that. CDBG is separate from that dictation of those funds to a jurisdiction for a specific purpose. So sometimes they're called 202 or 811 funds, they're funds given to a city or a jurisdiction that has a housing authority, for the specific purpose of developing those types of facilities within their city. And we don't, we are not allocating any of those funds.
Okay, just, I went to Compton Junior College and lived in that town, and it was a great, great city, great town. And HUD can really hurt you. So I just, I'm just pointing that I like to get these CDBG grant funds, but make sure that when we, when you get in bed with HUD, you're gonna lose a lot of your control for certain things. That's my concern. And I just want to know, this is the only way we can get these CDBG grant funds?
This is because we became an entitlement city back in 2009, I believe it was, maybe it was 2010, and so we're allocated a specific amount every year, only for these specific functions that we've outlined.
Okay.
Are there any other additional questions of council to the staff? At what point, if we, if we were to make a modification to any of the CDBG awards that were recommended in the staff report, at what point would we be doing that?
That would be this evening, however...
At what point? Okay, let me refine my question.
Sure.
That's, that was my question earlier before we opened. That's on the next resolution. Okay. Hearing no questions of staff, I'm gonna open the public hearing, time 9:48 on the first resolution. Madam Clerk, do we receive any correspondence, and was this matter legally noticed?
It was legally noticed, and we did not receive any correspondence.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
I would like to clarify with each of the speakers who are here, I believe they want to speak on the second portion of the 14-15 allotments. Let me check. You are all here to speak on the allotment you may or may not be receiving for 14-15, is that correct? Do any of you wish to speak on the reallocation of monies from 12-13 or 13-14? Okay. They have no public testimony on this particular public hearing.
Very well, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, time at 9:49. Counsel, this is our discussion. Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
And Mayor Man?
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto the next resolution there, Mr. Lennox?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. This, again, this item is for the hearing of community development block grant for program year, fiscal year 14-15 annual action plan and allocations. I will spare you some of the details that I already mentioned in the first hearing, as the definitions are quite similar. The comprehensively, the CDBG funding is intended for the purposes of providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and opportunities to expand economic opportunities. And those eligible funding and program opportunities are listed in the staff report, as well as in this PowerPoint. I mentioned them earlier. There we go. Currently, we're in program year three, and looking at the 14-15 annual action plan. The city has developed its first citizen participation plan, which also provided feedback on how allocations would occur. And annually, an action plan must be prepared and submitted to HUD for approval for the upcoming program year, which is what this item is for. The CPP has encouraged citizen participation and the development of the city's consolidated plans, annual action plans, and consolidated annual performance and evaluation reports, also known as the CAPR. Part of the CPP includes Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee. And just to note that the MCAC only provides feedback on the, the public services portion of it, not the other allocations, just for clarity. Applications are released in December, there's a technical workshop held in January. Staff reviews the applications for completeness and eligibility, and then the MCAC review and funding recommendations for council are considered in February, which all occurred this past winter. So for the program year 14-15, the community input during the citizen participation process identified the following needs: infrastructure improvement, home repair programs to ensure homes are safe, sanitary, and accessible to persons of all ages and levels of mobility; youth activity services and a youth center; youth senior services, I'm sorry, senior citizen services; park recreation and community facilities; circulation and other street improvements to facilitate traffic flow, eliminate unsafe conditions, improve access to local businesses; crime awareness and prevention, and also job creation. The final draft of the action plan reflects the MCAC funding recommendations for public services, which is included in your staff report. Final action plan in public hearing was noticed on April 7, 2014, and the table within your report, as well as on the screen, identify the recommended funding allocations for the 14-15 year. You see there, minor home repair grant, recommendations, 120,000, Case Sanisero's Phase II exterior improvements at $145,700, ADA accessibility ramps project at the Case Sanisero Center for $25,000. And then under the public service component, Menifee Arts Council, Assistance League of Temecula Valley, Boys and Girls Club of Menifee Valley, Hospice of the Valleys, Menifee Valley Community Covered, and Menifee Sun City Concern Incorporated, all receiving $10,000 each, as a recommendation by staff. And planning administration for the program within 14-15, with a set aside of $87,675, for a total allocation of $438,375. So again, the recommendation this evening is to conduct the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the 14-15 annual action plan, and authorize staff to proceed with submittal of the 14-15 annual action plan to HUD. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing at time 9:53, and call, Madam Clerk, do we have, have we received any correspondence on this resolution, and was this portion properly noticed?
Yes, no correspondence, and yes, it was noticed.
Thank you. Call the first public speaker, please.
Dorcas Shackman.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I am Dorcas Shackman, President of Assistance League of Temecula Valley. Our chapter was founded in 1989, and has in this time provided new school clothing to over 25,000 underprivileged students. I would like to begin by saying thank you to the City of Menifee for all of your support in the past. We are an all-volunteer organization. 100% of grant monies received go toward the purchase of new clothing for disadvantaged schoolchildren. We're asking funding for Operation School Bell, our main philanthropic program. This program provides new school clothing, I'm sorry, this program provided new school clothing to... clothing to 1,812 disadvantaged students in grades K through 12 in this past school year. Four hundred and three of these students attended school in the Menifee Union School District. There is a continuing need for assistance in the four school districts served by Assistance League. U.S. Census Bureau reports that as of December 2013, over 12,000 schoolchildren in this area live in families in poverty, including 14 percent that attend the Menifee Union School District. Each year, these children return to school without adequate shoes and clothing. Some are ridiculed and bullied because of their appearance. Others suffer silently as their self-esteem plummets along with their academic success. Operation School Bell seeks to directly meet this basic need through the provision of new school clothing. For the 2014-2015 school year, our goal is again to serve over 1,800 students. Students are referred to this program by the school health technicians. Qualified students attend shopping events that are held at the local Kohl's stores. These students have the opportunity to shop in the same retail environment as their peers and are allowed to choose the school-appropriate clothing that they need and want. They learn to work within a budgeted amount and to make clothing choices consistent with school guidelines. Parents and educators report that having appropriate school clothing is a boost to the child's self-esteem and helps to build the confidence that is important as students move into middle and high school. Most importantly, having proper school clothing strengthens the likelihood that these students will continue to, to attend school and receive the education that is greatly needed to prepare them for productive lives. Operation School Bell not only benefits these students, but will also add over $220,000 of revenue to the local economy. Although this program strives to provide clothing to as many local disadvantaged students as possible, our ability to expand the number of students that we serve is limited only by needed funding. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Don Prather Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, councilmembers. Everybody in this room, I look around this room, I think I know just about everybody. And you know the good that the community cupboard does. And primarily tonight, I just want to say thank you. I wish there were more of those, of the huge crowd we had here earlier, so we can say thank you to this community, to the city council. The city council and staff are enormous support. Almost no event goes on at the city that they don't ask people to bring food to, to help the, the other people that's here in Menifee. The businesses, the churches, the schools, we, we couldn't do what we do without them. Last year, the community donated about 197,000 pounds of food that we were able to redistribute out to families in need. One of the things we'd like to do with the money that we're asking you for to approve is to make sure that we distribute that food, that we can include the most nutritional food we can. So we use that money to buy fresh produce, meat and poultry, and other things to make sure that those boxes aren't just full of highly processed carbs and canned foods. So that money is important to us there. The money is also important to us now because we have launched a school bag program in our local school district that is rapidly, is growing by leaps and bounds rapidly. We are getting a huge amount of support from the school districts, from the interfaith council, to make that program a success. And the intent of that program is to send food home from the schools to children who probably are pretty much living on free school lunch programs. I just got a number the other day from the school district of over 9,000 students in our local Menifee School District, and I'm not even talking about Romaland yet. Almost 4,000 of them are on free and reduced lunch. That is, demonstrates to us there's a tremendous need. Those families can come to us, but they don't always, their pride keeps them away, but it's less intrusive if the child brings home, you know, a nondescript school bag with food in it. So that's one of the other things that this money will be used for. So again, thank you so much to you, the councilmembers, that I know we see you at our events, the staff that I know are big help to us. And thank you very much and I hope you get to go home soon.
Mr. Denver?
Did I hear you say that you don't service the Romaland School?
Yes, I just wasn't counting them in the statistics.
Go. Next speaker, please.
Betty Spatafora.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. I want to give you a huge thanks for providing us last year with the CDBG. We served Quail Valley School and Romaland School. We served almost 400 students. There's another number, 400, that I like to use, and Councilman Furman can attest to this. We had a gallery reception at the end of our Summer Youth Art Institute. We wanted the students to know that when you produce a piece of art, you could put it in a gallery for others to see. And the custodian at Quail Valley School asked how many chairs we would like put up. We said 100, and we'll be lucky to have probably 20 people in the first two rows. Well, we had over 400. They all jumped, the people that came later jumped in. The custodian threw open the doors. They put up chairs in straight lines. They were thrilled with what we had brought to Quail Valley School. We even were invited to speak afterwards at their community meeting. The work of the Quail Valley students, one from each session, is still on display, framed at their school. The Romaland School that we serve, which is actually Romaland School, their work is on, still on display in their district office and probably will not come down until it is replaced. This is a very valuable program. We are able to send home at the, well, I should comment that one of the things you are supposed to do with CDBG funds and a lot of grant funds is sustainability. So we had to search a bit. What we decided to do was provide each student with a blue bag that they took home that had art paper and art supplies that they could continue to use throughout the summer. This year, we have added a writing component for creative writing. The, excuse me, all of the classes are taught by professional artists, we, and writers, and we hope you will continue to support our program and that you will take the golden opportunity to come to the Quail Valley Gallery on the last, next to last Friday in June. And the last Friday in June, you will visit Romaland School and see what your young citizens are producing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Jack Corlett.
I'm Jack Corlett from the Menifee Sun City Concern. And we are, have been with this, in this area for over 50 years, I'm sorry, over 40 years. We are dedicated to supporting the independent living with peace of mind to those at risk. We have an information and a referral service, which is 100% background-checked. We have an outreach program. We have a daily telephone calls that we make to over 60 or 70 people a day. And we have a gatekeeper program. We have been very fortunate in being, having this CDBG grant, and it had helped us in maintaining the services to these people at no charge. We work very hard at doing this. And we are, caseload has now increased over 50%. And we thank you very much for what you have given to us over the years for the, this CDBG grant. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you, Mr. Corlett. Next speaker, please.
Debbie Mannion.
My name's Debbie Mannion and I am president of Lake Menifee Women's Club. And I'm here for, to ask for support in the grant. We have not been recommended on the Citizens Advisory, but I'd like to explain a little bit about the program. We partner with the Spark of Love, the Fire Department, and collect toys and books, jackets, and all for the children in our community that would have no Christmas without it. But it is also a year-long program. This, Spark of Love with the Fire Department, they provide toys and, and other items, bedding, that type of thing, to families throughout the year when they have fires or when there's a catastrophe in the family. We would like to expand the program from, we basically go to age 12. We would like to expand it to age 17 and also hit more of the high school kids or the middle school kids with more educational toys, more books that we don't have, more science projects that we don't have, more jackets and blankets that, that are desperately needed for all the kids. And this is why we would like to need the grant money to expand our program and hit more children. We are only hitting a, a small amount of our community. We would like to expand it and hit more of our community. Right now, we are held at Quail Valley, so the majority of our kids are from that area. But there are other area, more kids out there that we would like to hit. We also partner with U.S. Bank, Rotary, and Oasis, all partner with us to get the whole program done. So I'd just like to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denver.
Before you sit down, where do you exactly, where's your main project at? What time of year, where?
This is the Spark of Love, which is a Santa's workshop program held at Quail Valley Elementary School on the lap.
Kids, do you serve at Quail Valley Elementary?
Right now, we're serving about, about 800. This would expand it to about 1,300.
And how many toys do you give each child?
We give each child a minimum of two toys and then a, a family game, a family book, stuffed animals, ornaments, a game to play with prizes from the game at the event. It takes about 45 minutes for the family to go through the event.
Bicycles?
Bicycles.
Pictures?
Pictures. They get a picture with Santa, they get a frame for that, they get a, the bicycles are done by drawing. We would like to expand our drawing to iPads or things like that, that the older kids could use. In the drawing area, we wouldn't be able to give that to all of them.
You'd like to get a little more money, Sue. You wouldn't have this Santa Claus, you'd get somebody a little bit better than, oh, never mind.
We like our Santa Claus, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mannion. Next speaker, please.
Those are all the speakers for this item.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions from the speakers? Hearing none. Closing the hearing at time, time is 10:07, and we're inside the rail. I would like to indulge, the council would indulge me for just a moment. I didn't participate in this process last year because I recused myself because I did a little bit of work for the Menifee Sun City Concern in the year leading up to me being put back on the council. And so if you would indulge, I would like to offer a couple of modifications. I want to thank staff for what they've done. I want to thank the NCAC. But I would like to propose to the council a little bit of a different distribution, and I'd like to share that with you right now for discussion and/or motion. What I would like to suggest we do is the following. If you wanted to follow along on page three of the staff report or whatever, I would like to propose we reduce the Arts Council of Menifee Grant from 10,000 to 5,000. I propose we reduce the Assistance League of Temecula Valley this year, down from 10,000 to 5,000. I propose we increase the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee Valley to 15,000. I propose we reduce the Hospice of the Valleys from 10,000 to 5,000. I propose we leave the Menifee Valley Community Covered at 10, Menifee Sun City Concern at 10, and we award the balance, $5,000 to VFW Post 1956 and $5,000 to the Menifee Lakes Women's Club. And I believe that adds up to $60,000. That would be my motion if I had a potential for a second or some discussion.
I didn't hear the, the last part. You said 5,000, 5,000.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll go, reduce Arts Council from 10 to 5.
Well, I got that. Arts Council from 10 to 5, and the Assistance League of Temecula.
Oh, I see where you're at, okay.
10 to 5, and then give Boys and Girls Club 15, and then the Hospice of the Valley, reduce it by 5, but then you came in with some other thing.
Okay, leave, leave Menifee Valley Community Covered at 10, leave Menifee Sun City Concern at 10, and then award 5,000 to the VFW Post 1956, and then also award nine, $5,000 to the Menifee Lakes Women's Club. And I believe that all those modifications still add up to 60,000.
Could I make one modification? Can we all talk?
Yeah, of course. Who, I can't, who had their light on first?
Me.
I'll go with Mr. Furman.
Yeah.
Reverse alphabet.
Could, uh, could we reduce the Planning Administration from 87 to 47? How about there?
Ms. Willoughby?
Why do, why do they get 87,000? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, as far as the planning and administration of 87,000, there's already a set aside of 20,000 that's mandatory for the Fair Housing Services. Every entitlement community has to have fair housing as part of their program. So it's actually 67,000. The cap for administration and planning is 20%, period, and public services is 15%, period. So you can't unfortunately shift over, increase that 15%.
Do we use that much?
67,000.
Do we spend all that much money? Do we spend that 67,000?
Yes, that's for, that's for the administration of the whole program, of the whole year, for staff time to run the program. There's significant staff times, particularly with the senior, the minor home. Excuse me?
That's almost a full-time employee for a whole year.
Mr. Johnson?
The point is, it significantly shifts general fund dollars to community development block grant funding.
Mr. Denver?
I would like to, I would like to propose that we drop that amount, the 87,000. We simply drop it by the amount that you changed here. You know, I think it's $20,000.
But we can't do that.
What she's saying is, is that we, we're paying this, we're, we're putting the money in to the city because we actually spend it. I'm saying, let's, let's use other funds in general to pay for that. I, I, I would rather take, take the funds from that source and put them in to replace this money and then let the city work out the rest of the details. We can do that.
Mr. Johnson?
Actually, we can't do that.
Why is that?
This money, as Mr. Edgerton said earlier, comes with some strings attached. And those strings have specific dollar amounts that you can use for specific items. And that's what we have laid out here. You can't co-mingle or move a fund from one area to another area because you want to spend it on a different function. There's particular functions with particular percentages that are based on the total dollar amount that this, that the city's entitled to.
It, I understand, but it says the top amount that you can do. You can't do another dollar more. I think we could, this is for an employees in a certain department.
This is for the administration of the entire program. You're correct.
Right, and so we could simply shift that administration to you and you just figure out how to do it out of other funds.
No, because then you'd be taking general fund dollars and putting it into the community development block grant fund entitlement.
Can't do that.
And you can't co-mingle funds.
I'd like to hear our attorney speak on that.
Okay, or, Margarita, do you have something to add that's particular to the?
Public, I'm sorry, public services cannot be more than 15%, period. You can't add to it. If you wanted to move money out of the planning administration, you can do it to maybe the minor home repair program. Those are infrastructure or facility projects. But public services, HUD is very specific in that it cannot be more than 15%. So it can't be more than $60,000.
Armed with that information, that is my motion. Is there a second on these, on these potential modifications?
Mayor, I did have an additional thing as far as your recommendations. HUD has strongly recommended that all the awards be at least $10,000.
We understand. Did I hear Mr. Furman second that?
Yes, I did.
We have a motion and a second. Are, is there any additional discussion?
I think, I think it's a very bad idea. I think that I'm not going to sit and say that VFW is a bad thing, I belong. I'm not going to argue against any of these. I think we should take out a general funds or something to replace these funds. These organizations plan, even though they may or may not have right to do that, they sort of plan on this amount of funds. This is going to cost, is going to move each of these programs down. And unless we absolutely have to, I really would rather not shut those other functions down.
Well, I don't think it's shutting them down, Mr. Denver. In fact... In fact, I think it's quite the contrary. I think some of these folks we've been funding since its inception, and to remind you, as I watched the proceeding last year from the conference room in the back, you led the motion to reduce the Menifee Sun City Concern from twenty thousand down to ten in order to give the Arts Council another ten.
No, 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 to give them ten in the first place.
Excuse me. You did, you did.
Just ten.
You, the MCAC recommendation as presented by staff was twenty thousand dollars for the Sun City Concern.
That's correct.
And it was zero for the Arts Council. And your motion was to reduce Sun City Concern down to ten.
Right.
And give the balance to the Arts Council.
Correct.
I'm just kind of following your previous leadership and spreading some of the, the funds around to some of the other worthy, worthy organizations that actually filed. So, this way, the only one that wouldn't get any money that actually presented an application would be the Valleywide Park and Rec District, so.
Did you also hear her state that, for some reason that I don't understand, that we should keep these numbers at ten thousand dollars at a minimum?
Yeah, I heard her. And so, Mr. Edgerton, you have floor?
No, I want clarification on the ten thousand minimum, why? What's the rationale for that?
I can speak to this. As I started the entitlement process with the city, and I did the initial application with HUD, they strongly recommended as in, because of the administration required for administering the public service programs, that you, ten thousand dollars is the minimum for programs, because there's a lot of work and auditing on our, on our part and the recipient's part. What, we would be happy to research if, and I understand it's council's pleasure to reduce these to five thousand. An option would be to approve it as is, we could go back and research with HUD and bring an amendment back later as well.
Did I hear you say that it's a HUD recommendation, it's not a mandate?
They were very strongly, and I don't want to say it's a requirement, but they said when we submitted our initial entitlement application that they would not approve over, under ten thousand dollars at that time.
I'd rather ask for forgiveness than permission.
Okay.
That's my position, anyway. Is there a modification to, does anybody want to modify the motion in the second?
Well, I, yeah, I've got a concern when, when staff is telling us that they are strongly concerned about ten thousand, that, that's, that's a concern of mine. There's a reason for that, and you're going, if, I don't want any blowback from HUD. I don't want them to even know we're here.
You think they're going to do high, high-density housing?
We have a motion and a second, I'd like to call for the question.
Well, can we have a little more?
Of course, I thought you were done. We seem to be relying, we seem to be relying, well, never mind, I'm not going to say that.
You have no more information on that, right?
Not without speaking to HUD, no.
But that's the strong recommendation of HUD?
At the, yes, that's been there, we've asked a couple times over the, in the last two years whether they would allow us or approve an application less than ten thousand dollars, and they said no. And we did not ask this year, I could certainly research that, or if we wish to make that motion and it's approved, we would just follow up with them.
Want to make it with HUD approval and?
Is there any other place where we can get money for this program?
We can get it from the people, we can raise taxes.
I think, I, I, last year also, I recall, you guys got creative as I was sitting in the, I remember these things, like an elephant. You guys also awarded.
This is a fat joke?
No, I, I've lost thirty-one pounds, it's definitely not a fat joke. I also seem to recall you gentlemen approving five thousand dollars for Valleywide Park and Rec District, and it was augmented by five thousand dollars from the general fund to give them ten.
And we seem to, they seem to forget that.
And, and, and based upon the staff's report tonight, they haven't spent it. They still have seven thousand dollars that they haven't used. So, you know, I'm willing.
Let's augment it by this much for the, by the general fund.
Hey, I'm a risk manager by trade, and I like to operate in the gray area, but if you guys want to do something else, someone make a substitute motion. Because there is a motion and a second on the floor.
Go ahead, John.
My substitute motion is, is that we instruct our city manager to come up with a mechanism, being creative as he is, to be able to fund our programs as they are, was funded last year, with the increase of five thousand dollars to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Menifee, that makes it fifteen. The VFW five thousand dollars, the, what was this?
Menifee Women's.
Menifee Women's Club five thousand dollars, and I'll take the risk on those last five. I'll let you win on those.
Mr. August?
I'm, actually, I, I like what the mayor said, I'm troubled by what staff says too, wasn't expecting that. I, I, I think what Mr. Denver's suggesting is that we're going to have to take, I think Rob's, the staff's solution will be to take money out of the general fund, and I, I think there's some.
You can't do that.
Is that true?
Yep, that's where you get the money, right?
That is what we did last year.
Yeah.
Unless Terry has a different recollection, that's my recollection of how we made up the additional funds, I think it was some forty-seven hundred dollars to make it ten thousand minimum.
That was not. That actually was not approved by HUD when we submitted it, and we ended up with a larger allocation than we originally planned for, and so we were able to fund Valleywide, but we were not able to augment the CDBG.
You're not allowed to do that.
Right, we can't mix.
That's the co-mingle. Mr. Johnson?
So, the idea was that we attempted to augment it and submitted that, it was denied, but then our allocation was increased, so we were able to cover it that way, through CDBG. So, is this our final allocation number that we know of as of right now, or is there something?
Last year was, there was sequestration, so we had a, we didn't have final numbers.
We were adjusted down, correct.
Right, so, now we have final numbers for this year.
All right, all right, all right, all right. I will modify my motion as follows. To approve the original grants of ten thousand dollars with alternate funding at, an additional five for the Boys and Girls Club, five for VFW, five for Menifee Lakes Women's Club, if it becomes available as we get additional funds from the Fed. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, wait, we have more discussion.
No, just clarification on, on the motion. You're seeing an additional five thousand for the Boys and Girls Club, five thousand for VFW, five thousand for Menifee Women's Club, as it comes available.
As it comes available through the program, because it was, there was funds available, that's how the Valleywide Park and Rec was augmented up to ten thousand dollars last time. Isn't that correct?
I could also certainly, if it's council's direction, follow up with HUD on the ten thousand dollar limit again.
Let's ask them, I'd prefer, I'd make that part of my motion as well.
So, there's an understanding that may or may not occur.
Correct, yep, as long as those in the audience know that that may or may not occur with the alternate, not the alternate, but the.
Modified.
The modified amounts down the road.
What did you do with Boys and Girls Club?
Left it at ten, with an opportunity for five more, should the funds become available. But that also includes VFW and Menifee Lakes each at five. So, so the original recommendations of the MCAC stand as presented by staff, with the addition, additional funds awarded if they become available to those other entities.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
I'm going to vote yes on this because it's my motion, but I am going to be very, very hard-pressed to continue to award the same amount to the same organizations year over year over year. I'm just not going to vote it that way next year if I'm here, okay? So, aye.
That's a challenge.
It is, well, it's a challenge in terms of a future vote. Okay. Man, I'm almost sorry that I brought it up. Onto the next agenda item, agenda item twelve point two, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance, amending ordinance two thousand nine sixty-two to include new exemptions for newly constructed specially-adapted homes for severely disabled veterans under the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Intigation Fee Program. In a sense, it would reduce the TUF obligation on a veteran's disabled home. It passed through the WRCOG TAC, I believe, Executive Committee unanimously, and we're asked now to proceed through a first reading with the ordinance with the city. Staff recommends adoption.
I don't think we do enough for a veteran, so I strongly support this. The only question I have is the way this is structured, there's no possibility that somebody can say, okay, we've got this unit, this unit, this unit, and by the way, we've got another one in the basement for the disabled veterans. In other words, you can't piggyback other programs on this, can you?
No, I don't believe you can.
I'd like to be certain that we can't. I mean, I'll support it as, as of this moment, but I'd like us to take a double check of that, to make sure you can't piggyback, because we, I, I watched what happened, for example, in Katrina, government comes in, some very good programs, and then you get some very innovative guys that scam it, and, and I don't want to see anything come off what's to the disabled veterans.
I hear you, and I believe these still have to go through WRCOG for approval.
Right. But this exempts a disabled vet's home from being assessed a TUF fee.
Correct.
That's all it is.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion on this ordinance?
I move.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Denver. Call, roll call, please.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August? Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto agenda item twelve point three, first reading and introduction of ordinance number twenty fourteen one forty-five, amending the Menifee Minnesota Code to update the prime face of speed limits on certain streets in the city of Menifee.
Moving.
Well, I, now, I think that's fine, because we had a workshop on this, okay? Are you okay with that, Rafael?
I am completely okay with that.
So, we had a motion from Mr. Denver and a second from the deputy mayor.
They're trying to beat my record, so if you could slow down a little bit.
It was the other way around, city clerk.
I'd love to see that record beaten.
The other way around, Mr. Edgerton was the motion, Mr. Denver was the second. Call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember August? Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Twelve point four, first reading and introduction of ordinance number twelve for establishing regulations for use of park and rec areas within the city. Mr. Furman? You want to hear a staff report first?
I thought we were just going to pass it, but.
Okay. Are you going to motion?
No, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a comment first.
All righty.
Okay. I'd like everybody to go to page eighteen, and I'm not happy, I'm not happy at all, because if you take the fourth paragraph from the top, you see where any person throwing a stone in a stream or a pond is in violation? And if you go down to the penalty, he's fined one thousand hundred dollars per violation.
A thousand hundred dollars? That's a million dollars.
You see, in a, in a penalty phase?
Twelve point four.
Yes, we can, we can clear that up, page eighteen.
Thirteen one point thirty-three, I'm not happy with, with fining for a misdemeanor, one thousand hundred dollars per violation. I don't agree with that at all.
It's a not-to-exceed violation.
Is that a little bit, Mr. Lennox, is that a little bit high?
Looks like it might be a typo, so we can correct that and present it in the second reading.
One thousand hundred dollars, what is it supposed to be?
Hundred dollars. Is it supposed to be a hundred dollars?
It depends on which one, it, it could be a hundred, it could be a thousand, I have to check closer at the, at the recommendation zone.
The other one's two hundred and fifty, so, the infraction's two fifty, I think you meant to have, say, a hundred dollars there. I just thought it was skewed, and you get my pinpoint reading there, Ms. Bennett, catching that again?
I so noted that you read that ordinance.
Point of order. Mr. Mayor, I spoke with Mr. Johnson earlier, now that we've established that Valleywide's going to be taking over the west side, there's no, there's no conflict here in reference to this ordinance, is there?
Was that a question to me?
Well, he, he.
Sorry, yes, there is no conflict with their operation inside the parks, he's set park rules and boundaries, correct, Mr. Lennox?
That's correct, these are rules and laws set up for city-owned facilities to be abided by any operator.
And just a point of clarification, the Valleywide is not taking over the west side of park, they're, we, the city still is maintaining the operation, they're, they're delivering a service to us in terms of managing, operating, and landscaping, and they're not, we're not turning over the whole thing to them.
Excuse me, why aren't they turning over?
We're still managing, you, we're semantics, never mind, let's move on. What was, what was the penalty supposed to be? A hundred or a thousand?
Having not got my municipal code in front of me, it is set out in the municipal code as no higher than, and I believe misdemeanors are called out no higher than one thousand, but I would certainly be glad to check that for you. It's simply part of our existing code that is putting.
Does it prevent us from introducing the ordinance tonight with that little typo in it?
No.
No, it doesn't prevent that, in fact, I think we make the modification and ensure it's properly noted in the second reading.
I would think in my research, it should have been a hundred dollars for the misdemeanor, because the infraction's two hundred and fifty dollars, and the misdemeanor's got to be less.
City, huh? City attorney?
I don't know, I believe it's a thousand dollars for misdemeanor. Misdemeanor is a more serious crime than an infraction.
Than an infraction?
Yeah.
I had that backwards all my life.
Infraction's administrative.
Yeah.
And the misdemeanor is up to a thousand, not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed a thousand.
So, it's not a thousand, yeah.
Eight thousand dollars for throwing a stone in a pond, okay.
Okay.
But, your motion should state that it will be, that you're approving it subject to the correction of the amount.
Okay, and I can't remember, was there a motion already?
No. We have my.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
You had asked for a, a report.
With the modification.
Maybe I want to, maybe I'd like the ordinance read in its entirety.
We waived that already at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Furman.
Well, on point of order, it's understood then that there is no conflict with the Valleywide taking over the operation of the west side.
Thank you for that clarification.
Do they make, you just a point, does Valleywide make their own rules, or are we making the rules that Valleywide lives by?
For the city-owned facilities, these laws are to govern use of those facilities, not Valleywide facilities.
Good, thank you for that clarification.
And for any conflict, we'll obviously work it out with them.
We have to put up the signs, no throwing stones in the pond.
Correct, part of the staff, part of this past, part of the staff presentation was some of the signage concepts, but it sounds like council has, has some consensus on this, and we'll post them regardless, independent of who's operating.
We do have a consensus of humor.
Okay, so we also have a motion from Mr. Denver with a modification on the, the typo, and is there a second on Mr. Denver's motion?
Second.
Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, onto agenda item twelve point five, approved joint community facilities agreement twenty fourteen dash sixty-five, Eastern Municipal Water District for tract number twenty, two eight eight five nine, Menifee Partners. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Terry Willoughby, your finance director, has a brief staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. A developer, Menifee two eight eight five nine LLP, has requested the city enter into a joint community facilities agreement with Eastern Municipal Water District and themselves. Developer is in the process of forming a CFD with EMWD in order to finance water and sewer improvements. Approval of this agreement will allow a developer to finance development impact fees that are due to the city through the CFD financing. If not approved by the city council, the CFD will still move forward with EMWD, but it will not include the development impact fees owed to the city. They'll still owe the diff, but they will not be included in the financing. Approval of the agreement does not affect the CFD formation. These track, it also does not affect the approval of the housing. These track maps were previously approved and final by the County of Riverside in 2007. The project went partially forward and then stopped, and now they're resuming construction under a different owner. The city council also approved a similar agreement with the developers of the Audie Murphy Ranch in January of 2011. It's almost the same type of agreement, however, it was between Audie Murphy Ranch developers and Menifee Union School District. So with that, I'll take any questions. And this is the location of the property.
Of course, 2011, we were coming out of a very deep recession. We weren't even out yet. I've got a concern about the viability of the developer as to why they need to do this.
They are financing it, many developers seek CFD financing in order to stretch the payment of the project over, of the infrastructure improvements over years, rather than paying it all upfront.
And what are we doing, getting behind them in reference to the bonding?
They will bond whether we approve the agreement or not. All we are doing, they have requested that we bring this forward to you as an opportunity for them to include the development impact fee amount in their financing.
And if they go belly up, does that leave the city on the hook for the bonds?
No.
Who's, who's on the hook if they go belly up?
Eastern Municipal Water District will be financing the bonds.
So if the contractor goes belly up, and I'm thinking in terms of the deep-pocket laws that we have in California, there is no way that the city is going to be held culpable, because otherwise, I'm wondering why they're, we, they need our support in any case.
The only support you're, as I stated before, you're not approving the CFD financing, you're approving the inclusion of the diff in that financing. So the financing is going to happen whether you approve the agreement or not, and I'll let the city attorney address any issues of the city's liability on this.
Yeah, the, no, what the finance director has said is correct. There's no, you're not signing on to the financing, you're not, you're not issuing the bonds. You are merely approving the inclusion of this area in the CFD.
So in the worst-case scenario, where the developer goes bankrupt, that has no implication whatsoever for the city?
The only implication is that there will be money from the bonding to, for the development to begin in terms of its impact fees and so on. They'll be using that money to pay the city, but, and if they don't go forward, of course, there won't be, there won't be development. But there's, there's no implication for the city in terms of the bonds themselves.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, and Jonathan might need to jump up here for a second, that if, if the council votes to approve this, the diff funds will still be paid to the city, but the developer will pay those back through the process of the CFD. So we still get the money upfront, just like when you go buy, when you go buy a car, and you, and you put a loan, and you get a loan. The car company gets the money from the bank directly, and then you pay it back over time. It's similar to that. So we would be like the car company. We'd be getting the money upfront either on a, on a check from the developer or a check from the CFD facilities handler, but we still get our money either way. It either allows a developer to finance his costs over time, or it doesn't. We still get the money either way.
Right. The way it works currently on the, on the joint facilities agreement that's already been approved by council is they submit a payment request, we confirm that the development impact fees are due. If it's a reimbursement, the financing re, cuts a check to the city, and then we reimburse the developer.
And if we don't, if we don't support this, does this mean that the developer, in some form, to get it through, would pass some of these costs on to the price of the houses?
It probably will anyway.
They still...
Why, why do you say probably will anyway? I don't want anyone to get double paid.
When you fi, when you, when you finance improvements over time, you're going to pass that along to your, to the, through the sale of the homes, so that you'll be able to pay that CFD back down that you've put out. So either way, it goes to the price of the home. If they pay their diff upfront with us, they're going to add that to the price of the home to get that money back. If they don't pay their diff upfront to us, they're going to add that to the price of the home, so they get that money back. Either way, they're going to get their money back. That's just part of them doing their business.
So he's, he's borrowing the money from a CDF source and paying interest to them, but we get to check direct?
Correct.
You're saying? We already have the money. If he defaults on that, why then?
We already have the funds upfront.
Yeah. Mr. August?
Is there anybody here in the audience that's representing that position?
No, not tonight.
Okay.
Now, this may be a silly question, but, for me, but aren't, huh, isn't this neighborhood already built?
Uh, this is the remaining tract out there that's unbuilt.
Against the hill?
Correct.
This was a, a project formerly known, formerly known as Oak Hills, which is partially built and, but not completed. It was sold off to a different developer.
Good place to watch the fireworks, because I watched the fireworks from that hill that were over in the park.
All right, very good. Any other questions of staff? Is there a motion on this item?
One other question, how did the, the agreement with the Audie Murphy work out? Is that working out all right?
It's working out fine. We've started, they've started doing the payment requests and reimbursements probably within the last six months, and it's fine.
Well, they're, they're living up to their agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Is there a motion on this, gentlemen?
Show move.
Second, there's a second? Is there a second on establishing, joining the CFD? I'll second the motion. Call for the question.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
What'd you say?
I said aye.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
You guys never cease to amaze me.
Why would you say no? That just makes you make the decision.
I'm going to comment before I say aye, because you guys have approved CFDs in the city, and it, it amazes me the amount of questions that keep coming up about CFDs. We would think that we have, we would know what a CFD is by now. My vote is aye.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a three-two.
Onto Agenda Item 12.6, approve agreement with revenue and cost specialist for development of the impact fee study. I'm on Agenda Item 12.6.
I just wanted to hear your last comments. Are you sitting here criticizing me for voting no?
No, not at all.
Are you telling me I don't know what a CFD is?
No, not at all. I know...
What were the comments all about?
The comments about the questions, the comments about the questions about the CFDs seem to be, we, we keep rehashing them over and over again. That's all my, that's all I'm trying to say. I, I'm not criticizing you for your vote whatsoever.
You're not. Good.
Onto Agenda Item 12.6, because I don't like Melrose either, which is what a CFD is, under, under a different name. Is there a staff report on Agenda Item 12.6?
There is. Terry Willoughby, your finance director.
Hi, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The item before you is to approve the agreement for a development impact fee study. This would be the city's initial impact fee study. Development impact fees are fees placed on the development of land or conditions required for the approval of a development project. The fees are typically justified as an offset to future impact that a development's going to have on existing infrastructure. At the time of incorporation, the city adopted the County of Riverside's development impact fee schedule and has collected fees under that schedule. The county fees were developed using county facility needs and were calculated on a regional basis, rather than on a city basis with our own needs. For example, we collect a library book development impact fee. We don't have our own libraries, so we have entered into an MOU to give that money back to the county. So this study will establish our own facilities and establish development impact fees to fund the construction of those facilities. Based on prior city council direction, funding for this item was included in the adopted 2013-14 in the Development Impact Fee Administration Fund in the amount of $50,000. So it is included in the budget. Our request for proposal was issued in January 2014. Five responses were received, which were rated by a team of staff members. Based on the initial rankings, two finalists were selected, and phone interviews were conducted during the week of April 7, 2014. Based on the combination of rankings and interviews, revenue and cost specialists were selected. The cost of the contract is not to exceed $42,000, which includes developing the facilities plan and the fee study, fee schedule as well. And this is well within the budgeted amount. Recommended action is for council to approve an agreement with revenue and cost specialists in an amount to, not to exceed $42,000, with a term ending June 30, 2015. This time, I'll take any questions.
Question, this was a previous, I don't know if you've ever, it's late, so I don't know if you ever got it back to us on this question or not, but related to the library diff. I seem to recall a line item in our budget that had a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe it's somewhere in, in the six-figure range, still on our balance sheet. Now, if, if, we don't own any of the libraries, they're all county-owned, so as we collect that diff, do we not send it on to the county?
We have an MOU, but they never spend as much as we collect.
Okay, so how, I...
So what will happen when the future, when we have our own study, those, the development impact fees that have been collected in those categories and will become like a beginning balance for the diff, for the new categories.
Okay, so...
So then it'll be reallocated.
At what point do you send those funds to the county?
When I get an invoice. When they're spent, they invoice us every year, and we send them.
So it's annual, it's an annual. That's why it sits on our budget line item for a while.
Right. And we've collected much more than they've expended.
All right, thank you. Mr. Furman?
Terry, if you could, could you supply a, the diff fee schedule that we're using right now? I mentioned this to a couple other councilmen, and I would, they've never seen one, so could you put one in each one of our mailboxes, please?
Oh, certainly, sure.
One other thing now, on page five, it seems like we're, we're getting a master facility plan also.
We have to develop a facilities plan listing to, which will, the consultant will work with all staff and city manager, and we'll bring that back to council to determine what facilities we need in the future.
Yeah, well, it, it says in your report that the master plan facility component is not required to complete the development impact fee. And the, the master plan's facility plan is like 4,000, and the diff fee study is 37,000.
Correct. Well...
So, it says it here, but everything, everything I read, it seems like the master plan facility, or the master facility plan must be part of this process.
Because we don't have one existing, it is required for us.
The only thing I was saying is if we're making a motion that for the diff fee study, we should add the master plan facility in that motion.
It's all part of the same contract, and I apologize for that.
All right, okay. This is my question.
Oh, that got answered, okay. Is there a motion on approving the agreement?
I make a motion to approve.
Roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
I, before I vote, I do want to make a comment, because I took the time to, to call three of these people on the reference list on, on their dealings with this report, and they were, they were very happy with the outfit that you chose, so that's good.
Thank you.
I did my homework.
Councilmember...
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 12.7, approve an allocation of $100,000 from the park diff fund balance for necessary capital improvements at city-owned parks.
I would move this with a question. Is there any conflict in reference? I wouldn't think so, but is there any conflict with Valleywide in reference to this particular program?
No, there is no conflict. This is intended to address facility conditions, immediate facility conditions at city-owned sites only, not Valleywide sites.
I'd think it'd make them happy, but I think it'd be a positive thing for them.
It's a positive thing for, for cities, for the residents as a primary, and then for operators as a secondary.
Great. Anyway, that's my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Denver?
I'm confused. They gave us a list right here that has half of those, well, no, has twice as many corrections as there are in here, and it, of course, doesn't talk about monument signs, which I agree with. I'm confused. Is Valleywide, in their fee structure, fixing the problems we have? So they're just going to repair it? Go ahead.
No, the, the proposal that you have in your hand does not necessarily address, at least from what we know of Valleywide's proposals, is not intended to address the capital improvement needs of each of the sites, but rather just identify that there are needs. The development impact fee for parks is intended to address those directly through city. So the other contract that you discussed earlier this evening was for maintenance and program operation only, not for capital improvement. Two separate things. I'm not exactly clear why those were included in Valleywide's proposal, as they were always intended to be separate, at least by staff's understanding.
I think we have a little confusion, but it sounds all right. I mean, I think, well, let's go forward, but I'll bet you a dollar to a donut, they're doing half of these too, or something.
My, if I might jump in, my recollection of the workshop last Wednesday is that this $100,000 is coming out of that diff allocation that you presented, which was, what was the total figure that was in, sitting on our ledger? It's like $450,000 or something like that?
Four, it's higher than that. For parks, it's 800,000.
800,000. So, so this $100,000 reduces that, that account, so to speak, to be used for these facilities on the west side.
Yes.
And that's what that diff was collected to do.
That's exactly right.
And so that would leave us a balance in that account of approximately $700,000.
And so we're going...
And we continue to collect it.
And continue to collect it.
And so we're going to then hire another group to go into the parks and do repairs in addition to Valleywide?
No, the, the intent here is for city staff to do this component. If there's any immediate capital need that exceeds the abilities of staff, then certainly we would contract a group to come in and do that, but that would be on a project-by-project basis. These 100,000 that's being requested for immediate allocation is only to address some of the aesthetic, health and safety, and other transition needs of those sites, now that the city is more involved in, in the park, the parks in general.
So we're doing things in the parks, resurfacing things, and Valleywide is not?
That is correct. Valleywide is, is, their focus would be on maintenance only. That's routine maintenance, mow, blow, weeding, mulch replacement on occasion, but the heavy lifting for overhaul or renovation of these sites would still end within the city's responsibilities.
I did not know that.
Mr. Mayor, in other words, when you're seeing capital improvement, we're in effect, since we own the buildings, we're talking about deferred maintenance as well.
In many cases, yes, that is the case.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
That was my follow-up, thank you.
Was deferred maintenance. And so just a, another use of this money, could, could, could another use of this money, you know that nice little park through the downtown district in Paris on D Street, where that, where the Fountain Park? Could the, could these funds be used to construct that someday? I mean, I'm asking. It's a, it's diff, it's parks diff, it's capital improvement, so I'm assuming that those would be the type of projects that we could use this fund for.
Yes, the request for tonight, though, is just for the 100,000 for the immediate needs.
Got it.
Long-term needs, obviously pending the outcome of the diff study, is that the master plan set the priorities for those, and, and certainly have to be adopted by council for the larger capital projects that you're referring to. for the larger capital projects that you're referring to.
I think, I think you'd agree, Mr. Mayor, that since we own the buildings, deferred maintenance would be shooting our own selves in the foot.
I agree 100% with you. Deferred maintenance doesn't get a lot of attention in public agencies. So we have a motion by Mr. Edgerton. Is there a second?
Not yet.
Second?
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gents. City Attorney reports? City Manager report?
None for tonight, thank you.
Is there a Public Works update?
There is not.
Can I ask a question about Public Works update?
Absolutely, sir.
What is the status, when can we estimate completion of the I-215 lanes through Menifee? What is the, what is the estimated completion of those lanes?
Okay, good question. We just met with the, we met with the construction manager yesterday on that project. We're working with them to expedite the construction of that, the completion by middle of 2015. I'll be discussing that with the city manager. Hopefully, I'll have some time tomorrow to discuss the option that is being brought to, to us to help expedite that project.
I keep, as I go out and about, I get asked that question, when's I-215 going to be done? And to the extent that we can share that timeline with the public, either in Art News, or the Menifee Matters Magazine, or something else, I think that would be helpful.
By the end of next week, I'll have a schedule that we'll be able to share with the public.
All right. Mr. Denver?
Two quick questions. What about the art and public places along the freeway? Is that going forward as was planned, even though there's been personnel changes? And the second question is the, the overpass at Newport Road. People say that it's started, and yet I can't see, are there people taking, is it started yet?
Okay, first question, the aesthetics for the Newport Road Interchange, that will establish the aesthetics for the Holland Road overcrossing, for the Scott Road Bridge and for McCall. That meeting, I was just talking to Mr. Zimmerman, is scheduled for Monday. We just got some renderings this week from the consultant from URS, and we'll be sharing that with the group. It did stall a little bit from staff turnover.
The other one is the, is actually Newport Road started?
So, so the Newport Road Interchange project has some preliminary work involving utilities and relocation of utilities such as Verizon, EMWD, Southern Cal Edison, and such. That work has already begun. There's been some potholing done to locate the facilities. The as-bills are not as accurate as that they would have liked, so they're spending a lot of legwork in establishing the location, learning where their utilities are, so they can determine where they got to put them. So that work is underway, and you'll see some work in earnest later on in this summer, where you'll see equipment out there ripping and tearing things up. And I will let you know before that happens. Line A has already begun, and I just want to let you know that. You'll see some earthwork out there off in Ethanak, and I'll be providing updates on that as well.
And the, any feedback from Caltrans on taking out that lane, that yellow painted median over here on the bridge heading east?
Staff is working on a meeting that Caltrans has requested it, requested to come out and physically look at it. So I hope to have additional information on that meeting as soon as staff makes that phone call.
Not to put you guys on the spot, but you said the exact same thing last time.
I know.
A meeting for Caltrans, so.
I am.
Can you keep us updated on that?
I will.
All right. You have a promise if he keeps us updated on that?
One of the reasons we didn't have an update tonight was because we weren't ready to share information with you.
All right, so we were premature on our questions, sorry. Are there anything else from council members? Mr. Furman?
Future agenda item?
Yes.
Where'd my notes go? I'd like to make a motion to place an urgency ordinance on campaign contributions and limitations to be added to the next agenda council meeting.
I'll second it.
An urgency ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting. Well, okay, so there's a first, a motion, and a second to add that on the 21st. Remind, now, City Attorney, you got something to say about that?
Well, my only question is, do you have an ordinance drafted that you had in mind?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
That must be the one from Mr. Smelzer from Temecula.
Okay.
Pass it to Mr. Johnson and pass it to.
Can we have copies of it, so we can get some attorneys to sue us correctly? Is this all the same copy?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, Mr., for the, for the motioner and the seconder, you're asking for an urgency ordinance for May 21st. Just keep in mind that I will not be here on May 21st. I'm going to be out of town, celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary. So if you guys want to have an urgency ordinance with only four council members here, when it takes four votes, by all means, have at it. But you may want to wait till I get back.
Well.
Mayor Mann.
Since you're probably going to vote against it anyway.
How do you know?
I don't know. I haven't seen the ordinance, but I, I know.
Shame on you for putting words into my mouth.
Mayor Mann?
Yes, City Attorney?
If this is the ordinance that was previously circulated to council, this is a Temecula ordinance. It deals with disclosures only. There are no disclosures that are coming up immediately, so it doesn't really need to be an urgency ordinance. We'll do it that way, if that's what you'd like. But given the timing, it won't make any difference.
Look it over, it might have been changed a little bit.
Yeah, it's just, the reason you have an urgency ordinance is because of the timing issue, but there's not, there's not going to be anything coming up until July, when the filings begin. So, yeah, so there's no, there's no rush. What I'm saying is, we can bring it back next time or the time after, but it doesn't need to be an urgency ordinance. And an urgency ordinance takes a four-fifths vote.
Mr. August?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we have to do this at the next meeting. Let's wait for the mayor to get back, just like we waited for you to get back.
All Mr. Furman needs is a second to put it on the agenda. If he wants to put it on the agenda, I'm seconding it.
It is. It has been motioned and seconded. All I wanted to do is have a quick discussion of housekeeping item, just to let you all know that I won't be here.
Are you going to be in Mississippi?
I'm going to be out of town, celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary. And no, no developer is paid for my trip, Wallace.
Are you, would you like? I just wanted, for the record, would you like to be here for this ordinance?
I would like to be, absolutely, because I have some, I happen to agree with some of the things that are being, that are going to be discussed, so.
And so the motions.
Some people have an opinion, and I would like to be here for the discussion.
And so the motions.
What do you think, seconder?
Pardon?
What do you think, seconder?
I'm, I'll second whatever your motion is. I'm, I want to keep my marriage. I'd like to go home.
It's up to you, Tom.
So I'll second whatever you want to do.
All right. Let's, let's take it to the following meeting.
Are there any other agenda items? We're adjourned.